Hi, I call the meeting of the Select Board to order today, Thursday, October 27th, at 5:04 PM. A motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call, Mr. Gieda.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kayvey.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Carrera.
Here.
Mr. McChrissy.
Yes.
And I'm here as well. If you're able, I ask that you stand and salute our flag.
Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining our meeting today. Um, I want everyone to know the reason we are having our Select Board meeting today at the SMAC location is because the Great Hall had a schedule conflict. So the FinCom is meeting and that's the reason we're being here. This was the location that was available. The only thing on our agenda today is to interview candidates for our Town Manager. Having completed our due diligence and our responsibilities of searching with the Search Committee to date, we are now pleased to interview the top four candidates. These names of the candidates are Thomas Colter, Michael McGovern, Yvonne Spicer, and Jonathan Beeter. With that said, I turn it over to Vice Chair Kayvey, who will tell us more about the process for this evening's interview. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've provided each member of the Board, along with public, a quick memo to kind of give you an idea of what this process is going to look like. I'll read it now. Members of the Stoughton Select Board and candidates for the position of Stoughton Town Manager. Tonight, October 27th, 2022, the Stoughton Select Board is interviewing candidates for the position of Stoughton Town Manager. Candidates will be interviewed in the following order and at the following times. One, Tom Colter, 5:15. Two, Mike McGovern, 6:15. Three, Yvonne Spicer, 7:15. And four, Jonathan Beeter, at 8:15. To ensure each candidate is fairly considered and that none has any advantage, tonight's meeting will not be broadcast live, but will be recorded and broadcast to later date. However, this meeting is still considered open with respect to open meeting law, and so the door must remain open and the public is welcome to attend and observe. This is not, however, a public hearing, so the public will not be able to participate directly in the interview process. For each interview, the process will go as follows. One, the candidate will have five minutes to introduce themselves and to make an opening statement. Two, each Select Board member will have five minutes to introduce themselves and to ask any questions they'd like. Three, once each member has completed their time, we will cycle through each member again for an additional five minutes each. If time, number four, if time remains, the Select Board Chair may recognize any member she chooses to ask additional questions, if they have any, leaving five minutes remaining at the end. And five, the candidate will have five minutes to ask any question they may have and give a closing statement. I have provided the Chair a randomized list of Select Board members for each candidate. This is actually the last page of this document as well. She may use this or choose some other order that she prefers. Ultimately, the Select Board has entrusted her with the authority to use her discretion. We will be adhering to a strict schedule, so I, Vice Chair Kayvey, will be keeping track of time and will share the view of the clock I use for all present to see this. Hopefully, you're able to see this here and will be able to keep track of time precisely. Once all interviews are complete, we will adjourn. The vote to appoint the Stoughton Town Manager will be on the Stoughton Select Board agenda for November 1st, 2022. During the time between tonight's meeting and the meeting on November 1st, members of the Select Board are welcome to contact candidates for follow-up questions and our community paradigm if they require further guidance. Thank you for your attention and consideration. Be well, Steve Kayvey, Vice Chair, Stoughton Select Board. As I mentioned, this, I did create a randomized list for the candidates, so everybody, you know, not the same person as the starting or writing or whatever it might be for every person, but that is up to the Chair's discretion. So our first candidate is Tom Colter, who starts at 5:15. And how are we doing? We got five minutes.
So we can take this time to ask if there are any discussion points about the process, or we could suspend it until 5:15?
I, I can state to the Board and everybody that's listening that I did acquire a ruling from Town Council that I can sit in and vote.
Oh, right.
I, I wasn't happy with what the lawyer of the day said, because you can't get anything in writing from them, and it bothered me, so I, I was gonna stay out, and then I, I spoke to Brian, and he, he pointed it out, and I got a letter, and I'll be, you know, formally bringing that to the Board.
Excellent. Mr. McChrissy.
Madam Chair, on the same light, just full disclosure that my son is a member of the Stoughton Police Department, and I had had a ruling sometime ago on the limitations of my involvement. This has no limitations to it, as we are choosing a Town Manager. There's not a Town Manager now. Whatever candidate is successful in obtaining the position, at that time, there are certain areas where I can't involve myself and would always follow the letter of the law. So right now, as Mr. Carrera, I just wanted for the full disclosure, so that somebody that didn't say that, I didn't bring it up. Thank you.
So we can suspend for five minutes? Oh, Mr. Gieda.
Will we be able to get a, a thumb drive or some other recording of this so that we can go through it, or do we have to wait and just get it when everybody else gets it? In other words, tomorrow, could I come in here and get a thumb drive of the, the meeting tonight, so I don't need to take copious notes? I can sort of more listen than anything else, and then...
I don't see why not.
That shouldn't be, they're very good at that. They're very good at doing that. It won't be the edited version of where they would, you know, anything that have, but all the raw data, yeah. I mean, I, I've done that before, you know, in shows.
Yeah. I agree, we'll, we'll confirm, but they've done that before for me as well. I'm pretty sure we can get it, all get a copy very quickly. I think they actually will have a link available. I could be mistaken here, but I'm pretty sure they'll have a link available that we can use directly, and this is something that Billy, who normally takes her minutes, who does it remotely, they can be providing that to her as well, so.
The lawyer's head?
Correct.
Rob's the guy that does all that here. I know that. That's where, when I've needed something, he's the one that's gotta find me, so maybe we can just ask him when he comes back in.
Well, we have three more minutes. I, I know we, we can certainly adjourn for three minutes, but I'd say, does anybody have any questions about the, the process that we've laid out or any concerns?
Seems to make sense to me.
If, if you say you're not ready to ask your questions of an individual, can you pass and it move down the line at different way, or do I have to be, like, say, say I'm still sifting how I'm gonna speak to one candidate, and I say I'm number one, can I say I'm gonna pass to the end?
I think that's fair. I mean, that would be something the Chair could certainly...
I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not prepared, I'm just saying that just in case, you know.
Yeah, I, I wanna be, you know, the, the idea of this was obviously to make it fair for the candidates, but also fair for us. If you're always the first person asking the questions, that puts a sort of unusual kind of pressure on the first person. And being the last person to have the very last word also has, has its advantages.
The last, the last one's the easiest. Even, even when you had a debate.
Yeah, the other thing is, is, you know, I don't, so we each have a total of 10 minutes. The questions I have, I think, will not come anywhere near 10 minutes. So I think that the questions I, I'll be able to get through in much less time, which means that if the people do have additional questions at the end, we'll have time available for them to ask those.
Did you find out from Council if we have to ask the same question to each candidate?
We, I, I didn't run that by...
I don't think you have to.
But I, I didn't run that by Council. I did ask that question of our community paradigm. There's no expectation that we ask the same questions. As, early on, when I first presented the package to you guys, I did include with that a list of questions that we cannot ask.
Right.
And all of that, these, these are usually around protected classes, and so that's the only, that's the only, those are the only provisions. Other than that, there's, whatever your priorities are, and however you wanna approach it, is each, each of our discretion.
At 5:15, you'd be the first up, right? Vice Chair Kayvey?
Yeah. Let's see how well I do. It's 5:15, so we can get started. Let's get our, our first candidate.
So I believe Anna. Yes, thank you for voting, you were telling us, giving our first candidate. So as a reminder, before you ask your question, just give a little background, your name and give a little background, kind of introduce yourself to the candidate.
I don't wanna scare them away.
Oh, Mr. Friendly.
Yeah, they've done their homework very, you know.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I was concerned that that roll of vibration was my nerves.
Yes, please have a seat at the chair.
Is it okay if my wife sits?
Of course, wherever she'd like.
Thank you.
Sit in the reserved chairs or...
Yep.
Far enough away so she can't kick me.
Before we get started, Mr. Colter, would you like a cup of water? I believe I would offer two more.
She did. They were very gracious. Thank you, Deborah, I'm okay.
Perfect, so, before coming in, I hope you received a, a brief letter that gave you the process for this evening?
I just saw it, just read it. That was great.
Perfect. So, so this is what we're gonna follow, so I'm going to keep time here. We'll get started right now. You've got, the first five minutes are yours to introduce yourself and to get going.
Excuse me for that. Before you start that, I did know it was five minutes, it may be five and a half. Should I speed it up? I didn't know that till I got in here.
Yeah, I, we'll give you the grace to...
Thank you so much.
Finish your statement.
Just leave out the fishing story.
You got the word, Chuck. Is this on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, good evening, Madam Chair, and through you to the esteemed members of the Select Board. I'd like to express my deep appreciation for your consideration of me as your Town Manager. I'm honored to be here this evening. Before we begin our discussion about my core values, experience, management style, and fit within the organization, I would like to share with you a bit about myself, my business career, and my extensive experience in local and state government. I was raised in Avon, which, as you know, was part of Stoughton until it was incorporated in 19, excuse me, in 1888. I came from a large extended family of public servants, including three priests, who served as army chaplains for multiple tours of duty in Vietnam. I met my wife Patty in first grade, and I'm proud to say that we have three extraordinary children, all, by the way, born in Stoughton. Ryan is a police sergeant in Kingston, Kerry is an inspector of DPH Radiation Control Program, and Patrick is a lieutenant with Boston EMS, where he leads their peer support unit. Patty and I moved our young family from Brockton to Kingston when I became the 10th employee of Clean Harbors. During our 30 years in Kingston, I served as the Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, a member of the Regional School Committee, its State Representative, and as its Town Administrator through COVID and the most significant economic expansion period in Kingston's recent history. I am very familiar with the town of Stoughton. During my eight years of high school and college, I was employed by a Stoughton company. Upon graduation, I joined that company. I often waited at the Old Town Spa and Stoughton Center for my wife to return home on the train. It was during those years that I developed lasting friendships with dozens of Stoughton residents. As my resume shows, I've enjoyed a successful business career. I served as the Senior Vice President of a $200 million publicly-held corporation, the president of one of the fastest-growing companies in Massachusetts, and the owner of a consulting firm that has provided management and leadership training to hundreds of business and municipal managers. As a senior executive and business owner, I acquired and reorganized failing companies, prepared operating and capital budgets, recruited and trained hundreds of employees, negotiated labor contracts, which, Lou, you will be happy to know, included performance standards, managed large projects, and led emergency response teams across the country. The most important quality I brought to every one of those challenges was leadership. To me, leadership requires a high level of core competency, a vision for success, a commitment to transactional honesty, the ability to inspire others and to build great teams. Those leadership qualities were built on a strong core values I learned from my blue-collar Christian family. Based on my deep understanding of Stoughton, I sincerely believe that my character, integrity, and vast experience will allow me to support the Select Board, inspire the town's 1,330 employees, and to serve Stoughton's 30,000 citizens with dignity. During my 12 years as State Representative, I learned how to advocate for the state funding and services that are available to all Massachusetts communities, but access by so few. As a member of the Legislative Committees on Economic Development and Redevelopment, Housing and Workforce Development, I understand the many challenges and opportunities outlined in your 2013 and 2015 master plans. If chosen as your Town Manager, I will work closely with your Legislative Delegation in building a beneficial partnership with state government. I admire Stoughton's commitment to education. As the Vice Chairman of the Legislative Committee on Higher Education, I fought hard for increased Chapter 70 school funding and for generous construction grants from the Mass Building Authority, Mass School Building Authority. I was delighted to learn from Superintendent Rod that the citizens of Stoughton share my passion for public education. At the municipal level, I gained valuable experience as a volunteer, well before serving in the Legislature or as Kingston's Town Administrator. As the Vice Chairman of the Kingston FinCom, I fully utilized my finance, education, and training to lead the community and the community through a very deep recession. As a member of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, I worked closely with the MSBA and received the highest percentage of school funding ever awarded to a municipality, 73%. Over a four-year period, Kingston built three schools. I was honored to support the project team on the two regional school projects. I learned firsthand that volunteerism is key to effective town government. Civic engagement builds community and pride. Having worked as a community volunteer for many, many years, I am grateful to those like yourself who selflessly give of their time and talents in service to their hometown. We know that towns are faced, we know that towns often face extraordinary challenges caused by winter storms, flooding, and power outages. With 30 years of experience as a crisis management professional, I will add significant value working in support of Chief Carroll in response to unforeseen crises. For example, in 2015, I opened a Kingston Elementary School to house and feed over 300 seniors for a four-day period when power was lost at the height of the winter period. I work closely with senior executives from Eversource to coordinate priority repairs. Within the first 12 hours, I used my contacts in state government to get the National Guard to provide 300 carts and bedding. I convinced the President of Cisco to donate three square meals a day to our residents at the shelter. We mobilized 40 volunteers to assist our fire department in transporting seniors to the shelter. When power, when the power was restored to the houses and everything was warmed up, I woke one of our senior guests. I told her the power was on and it was ready to go. She told me she'd like to stay a couple more nights. Out of that crisis came a heightened sense of community and friendship, something that we can bring to Stoughton, community and friendship. As the Kingston Town Administrator, I was honored to be part of the team that prepared and executed the town's response to COVID, which included daily updates on the town's website. While under daily attacks from a small yet vocal anti-government group who opposed all proactive COVID measures and who were in fact conducting a recall election at the time, we managed to substantially expand our commercial tax base and reduce the town's tax rate. How did we accomplish that, you may ask? By proactively recruiting target businesses to town and by collaborating with all department heads to address barriers to development. Not a single town employee left our employment during that very difficult period. That is probably the thing I am most proud of. Our economic development successes would not have been possible, however, without the help of our partners in state government, particularly Mass Development Corporation and the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. During a 26-month period, we secured more than $12 million in grants from the Commonwealth. Much of it needed to expand the water and wastewater infrastructure in support of our smart growth projects. With Stoughton's recent investment in its wastewater distribution system on Route 27, the town is well-positioned to build its commercial tax base, as called for in your 2015 master plan. I am confident that our partners in state government will support Stoughton's master plan with the financial resources needed to fuel economic prosperity. I very much look forward to working with Mark Tisdale and the Select Board, as together we build a vibrant Stoughton economy, create good-paying jobs for our residents, and substantially increase the town's commercial tax base. Economic development and prudent fiscal management are keys to managing the residential tax burden while also maintaining the town's commitment to providing high-quality services to its citizens. In closing, Madam Chair, my career as a town volunteer, business executive, state representative, town administrator, and leadership coach have prepared me well to serve the town of Stoughton. In preparation for this enormous opportunity, I have traveled most of Stoughton's 16.3 square miles and analyzed the town's 2013 and 2015 master plans. I am particularly impressed that Stoughton's 2015 master plan focuses on community inclusion, diversity, and full integration of Stoughton neighborhoods. I have carefully studied the town charter and its bylaws. I have read department reports and Select Board meeting minutes. I have watched Select Board meetings from the other night, that's how I knew about measurements and standards. I met with the State Department of Local Services to gain valuable insight into the town's financial condition and trends. I have spoken to many of Stoughton's recent Town Managers, not to seek their support for this appointment, but to gain their valuable insight on how to best support the Select Board, inspire the team, and serve the citizens of Stoughton. I'm happy to report that each of your former Town Managers were gracious in their offer of support and guidance should I be selected. Ladies and gentlemen, if you choose me for this position, I will hit the ground running. I'll close by saying I am certain that all of the finalists possess the requisite education and experience needed to be an effective Town Manager. In the final analysis, however, this decision is above fit, fit with the Select Board, fit with town employees, and fit with the citizens of Stoughton. If you choose me for this honor, I will work faithfully to become a valuable resource to the Select Board, a trusted leader of the town employees, and a dedicated public servant to the town residents. Madam Chair, thank you for this time. I thank you and the members for affording me this opportunity, and I look forward to taking all of your questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Kayvey and my fellow team.
Thank you very much for considering Stoughton as a place you'd be interested in working. I appreciate that.
It's my honor, thank you.
We had a chance to meet once before, but just as, just to reiterate, I'm Stephen Kayvey, Vice Chair of the Stoughton Select Board. I've been here for, for now coming on five years, and as I said, I do appreciate your consideration for the town. For, for my five minutes, I only have one question, so feel free to take your time, but also, we can always just move on and use that time later on as well. The question I have is, is really about focusing on failures, our experience with failures, our ability to rebound from failures, and I would like to hear from your own experience, some of the things that you've sort of singled out in your own thoughts about, you know, failures you've had, how you, you've dealt with them, and how you've perhaps overcome them in, in one way or another.
Mr. Select, but thank you, that's a, that's a great question. I make a habit of failing. I really do. It's part of being human. The character flaw is for those who refuse to acknowledge their mistakes, refuse to acknowledge their failures, and are unable to get up, modify their behavior, and move forward. Took me a long time to arrive at that place as a professional. It took me a long time to arrive at that place as a human being. You know, we talk about integrity at length, and, and I believe that integrity is, is having a set of core values that you've thought a lot about. You've invested a lot of critical thinking into who you are and who you wanna be and how to behave, and then behaving that way, that's authenticity. And so when one falls down and makes a serious mistake, and I have, in business, in my personal life, in my professional life, as a Town Administrator, I've been fortunate, I've been with my wife since first grade, so I'm very constantly reminded, time to make change, and, and I'm very good at doing that. The most important thing, as I said, is to acknowledge failure or to acknowledge a mistake. People say that takes a big person to do that. I don't know where that comes from. It requires a person of character to do that. I'll, I'll give you an example, and your recruiter said it was the elephant in the room, so I'd like to read you a statement, if I may, because I know some may have questions based on Facebook posts that often get mischaracterized and inflated and overstated. And because I don't wanna mess it up, I prepared a statement that addresses...
You mean, everything on Facebook isn't real?
Imagine that, imagine that.
Sure, do you know? That's filtered and reviewed, goes through a review board and everything.
My hope is that this sets the record straight. I would have never, if I knew what I know now, I would never have taken a job in my hometown. When you've won six political battles, winning every precinct of every town, and all of my opponents were very strong anti-government type people, you're gonna have some scars. And then when you become Town Manager, a Town Administrator of that town, you're sitting duck, because no longer is it me on that grandstand alone, I represent a board, so I have to zip it. It's not about me when I'm attacked. So I was attacked, and I made a mistake. I responded inappropriately. I'd like to read you the statement, just for the record. "On January 9th, 2020, I was confronted by the newest elected member of the Select Board. She suggested that I should be afraid of her. Why, you ask? Because years earlier, I resoundingly defeated her husband in a state rep race. She made it clear, as a member of the Select Board, that she was now in a position to fire me. At the same time, she was involved with a group of residents who were planning a recall election of her own Select Board colleagues. For only a few short minutes, we engaged in a heated argument. I immediately left the restaurant. She remained and had dinner. While I assumed the incident was over, I was mistaken. She returned home that evening and took to social media well into the early morning. Her version of the argument was inflammatory and inaccurate. She posted each night and early morning for more than a week following the argument, until finally, Town Council directed her to stop. Because of, because she had changed her expanded, and expanded her narrative repeatedly, I requested that the Select Board engage an independent investigator." I made this the recommendation, not her. "...to find the truth. The investigator concluded that we had an argument, which was started by the Select Board member. She further concluded that we both violated the Kingston Code of Conduct. I accepted the conclusions reached by the investigator and apologized for my part in the argument. I also learned a valuable lesson. The Select Board member neither accepted the findings or apologized for her part in the argument. We worked together without incident for six months following the argument. I resigned my position following the recall of the Select Board members I greatly admired. I completely understand that temperament is key to consideration in your decision. Therefore, may I suggest that you speak to members of your Legislative Delegation? I believe they could and would accurately speak to my temperament and professionalism during the 12 years that we served together in the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Very unfortunate incident. I played a role. I made a mistake. I should have just turned and walked away. I will bring that lesson with me to Stoughton, and every day of my life, I created my own problem by not turning and walking away. That won't happen again. Thank you for allowing me to answer."
Absolutely. Mr. Colter, my time is up, but thank you very much for your, for your response. Mr. Carrera.
Mr. Colter?
Yes, sir.
This, this would be like an employee question. Can you explain to me the use and the overuse of the word "team"? And just hold that thought, because the town employs department heads and staff. When we do the budget, we refer to them in the budget as FTEs, and you know what that is? Full-time employees. We don't recognize them in the budget as full-time team players. I've looked it up. The word "team" is a finite group of individuals that either work towards a direction, they can win or lose. I look at the Town Manager as he is the one who's... I look at the town manager as he is the one who's overseeing everything. There has to be a division between who's the boss and who was hired to do and fulfill what their job skills are. I don't say everybody else, but I have a problem with the word "team." Everything is team in this world, and it bothers me. I don't use it. I'm a businessman. Certain people have certain jobs. And some people feel left out when they're not part of the team. So if you can just talk to that and how you...
Well, Scott, thank you for that question. That is exactly what I do for a career right now. I teach leadership and management training, and this issue comes up every single day. And I would agree with you to the point that if a leader is not able to build a team, he or she should not use the word "team." The challenge is to build an effective team. You're right, it's misused as much as the word "love" and as much as the word "friend," as much as the word "integrity." But very few times, very seldom, do people take the time and say, "What does that mean?" To me, a team is a group of people that's all embracing common core values and clear objectives. That's what brings a team together. That's what gives a group of people the right to refer to themselves as a team. Is that they, you could ask any one of them, "What are our core values for this organization?", and they'll all say the same thing. You can ask them, "What are the objectives we as a group are working towards?", and they'd all say the same thing. They'd say, "What part of that objective are you responsible for delivering, for achieving?", and they'll give you crisp, clear answers. I would suggest that that's the closest thing you're going to come to a true team. And it is the leader's responsibility to build, through collaboration, to build that organization that gives itself the right to call themselves a team. Now, how do you do that? There's this great theory called hierarchy of needs, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. He wrote it in the early 19th century. And he talks about the pyramid. And at the bottom of the pyramid, there's four levels of needs. And as you go up the pyramid and you achieve that, you meet that employee's need, then they can get to the next place, and then they can get to the next place, and the next place. And the first one is a sense of security, a sense of safety. So they're not going to dwell in an environment where they're working for a screamer who's a leader. The next one is the sense of belongingness. You just referred to it. And it's the leader's job to make sure that every member of that organization, I'm not going to call it "team" until I convince you it applies, that every member of that organization feels part of that mission. You now get to the part about self-esteem, where a person feels like they're adding value. And it's because the leader and that team's colleagues are saying, "Nice job. That was a key part of our success today." And the last part of that is recognition. And it doesn't cost anything, and it doesn't take any time, that the leader needs to recognize and compliment members of his or her organization that is doing the job that's expected of them, which includes job descriptions, as we know. If they don't know where they're going, any place will get there. And then if there's no job description, we just argue about what you should have been doing. We talk about what's broken, as opposed to talking about how we could support that team member. I am a strong believer in Maslow's hierarchy of needs. I'm a strong believer in credibility, the book written by Kuntz and Posner about leadership. And I think when we do those things well, as a leader and as a manager, we have a right to call ourselves teams, because they'll come together and, as I said in my comments, during their most difficult time in Kingston history, rapid expansion, COVID, and a recall, not one employee left their employment with us. And I'm not saying I coddled them, but I stayed very close to them every day. Great question.
And then, do I have any, can I just say one?
No, your time is up.
I'm done?
Go ahead.
It was...
Mr. Gito. Sir.
I am Mr. Gito, by golly.
A pleasure to meet you, Mr. Gito.
I forgot to introduce myself. I appreciate your introduction, and it was basically one of the questions that I had to ask you. I watched a number of Kingston Select Board meetings and couldn't believe it, quite frankly. And it made me question your judgment. Why did you choose to start a career, a different career from the state legislature by becoming the town administrator in Kingston? I mean, I knew that you lived there. And I guess I'd ask that as the first question.
Mr. Gito, it wasn't in my career path plan at all. I was approached by the Board of Selectmen. Our commercial tax rate had dropped seven straight years. It had gone from 27% to 15% of the total tax base. Accordingly, the residential tax rates skyrocketed, because you had to meet the expense side of the budget. They knew that they needed strong economic stimulus, strong economic development. It's what I've done my whole career. I not only know what to do, I know who to work with to get it done. So I was recruited. There was no search. I was recruited by my selectmen, who were also dear friends, to the position. It never crossed my mind. Patty was pushing me hard to leave the legislature and go back into business where I started. I should have done that, because no one should take a job in their hometown. The Board at that time, Mr. Gito, was a group of highly competent, very highly motivated leaders who wanted to get a lot done. We were building a $40 million waste treatment plant. We needed to get state funding for it. They knew I could help there. We were building, we were expanding our water and sewer infrastructure, as you did down Route 27. They had to interface with MBTA. I had strong relationships with MBTA. So we were able to do in 26 months what I would argue that most people couldn't do in 10 years. But the problem was, during that environment at the time, the anti-COVID environment at the time, where Townhouse was locked down, nobody could come in, our anti-government people came to every selectman's meeting with masks on, or didn't come because they wouldn't wear masks, and they attacked this Board. And I was told, "Zip it," which is not my nature. And there were many times I wondered, Mr. Gito, myself, what am I doing here? In all my time of public service, I took major pay cuts. I made more money in business. So Patty would ask me daily, "What are you doing?". And A, I shouldn't have taken it in my hometown. B, when the Board, who I so much admired and would do anything for, when they were recalled for economic development from those anti-government people, I decided it was time for me to go. I could not serve that new Board, not because they did a recall, that's their right, and I respect that, but because of the way they did and do business today. And I just didn't want to be any part of it.
Thank you.
So thank you for the question.
That's helpful.
Thank you, sir.
Because I was sort of questioning your judgment.
In going there.
Right.
It wasn't that way when I went there. It wasn't at all. We were all rowing in the same, it was pre-COVID. We had big plans. We were meeting with the federal government, the state government, to get funding and guidance. We got the $12 million we needed to get everything done. We had, it should have been a period of great celebration, but not everybody appreciated the selectmen's success.
Thank you. I have 32 seconds left. Goodness. That's unbelievable.
Lou, you and I take 10 minutes to shake hands, then my 32 seconds.
So you've done your due diligence, haven't you?
I've watched the last 10 entire selectmen meetings.
Well, me too. Me too in Kingston.
My condolences.
I tried to check my contractor mentality at the door.
I'm glad you showed up after you watched those meetings.
Well, I've got a lot of strong feelings about those meetings. And I know you're tough on yourselves, but, Madam Chair, I will say, I think that the grace and the civility you bring to those meetings in your role as Chair is something I don't see in a lot of towns. So for that, I'm grateful.
Thank you so much.
We are too.
And all of you add your own perspective and unique value. Lou, I've learned more from you as a public servant in listening to your comments.
Thank you.
And so that adds to my description, my introduction to you, that I describe myself as a humanitarian and with a finance background. Finance is what I do in my day job. I've lived in and of Stoughton for 33 years, and I'm very passionate about this town. My question to you is, describe the approach you would take to address the desires of members of the community, to keep it like it is, as well as those in the community who want to see some new ideas, innovations, businesses, which may change the nature of the community, but expand the tax base. What steps would you take to address all needs effectively and in the best interest of the town, our town?
Well, that's a question. All of those things can be accomplished at the same time. It's not a one or the other answer. We can achieve economic development by recruiting businesses to town as long as we adopt a smart growth approach. We don't want to create more problems through development, whether it be traffic, congestion, or whatever. We can also create a sense of community by the way we do that smart growth. Let me give you an example. And the example comes from your master plan. The 2015 master plan, which was extraordinary. There's a term called "place-making," if you're familiar with that term. An integral part of economic development, I'm taking this out of your master plan, an integral part of economic development and redevelopment for mature communities like Stoughton is place-making. Place-making focuses on quality of life issues like inclusion, public spaces, integrated houses, and school. Place-making has a significant, place-making has made a significant differentiation in attracting residents, entrepreneurs, and businesses. Your 2015 plan addresses this directly. You can have both. If we do our plans as written in your 2015 plans, if we implement them, we're going to be given equal focus to driving the commercial tax base up, which lowers your residential tax base while maintaining services to the community, while at the same time focusing strictly on quality of life. We want people to come here to live, to work, and to stay here to play. If you go to the town of Norwood, you'll see what they did in their downtown. They opened up a big green in between all of their commerces, a big green. They worked with the state to stop those state roads coming right through their town. They diverted them. It's a long-term plan. And it works in the state. It's not foreign to the state. They will do it. We'll get the state in here, the South Shore, what's it called? They handle transportation and planning. OCPC. We'll get them in here, and we'll work on a long-term plan. You've got to take the first step, as opposed to doing a new plan every few years. We can accomplish both. It's not either-or. It's not economic development or quality of life. We have a right to aim big and achieve both. But place-making is a term, the only term in your master plan that's not completely familiar to me. It's something I learned from reading your plan. But that's got to be, it is a stated goal in your 2000 plan, where it talks about public spaces to work and to play and to meet people and greet people. We started our economic development plan in Kingston after we built the largest sports complex in the South Shore. There's 14 fields. They all look like professional stadiums. Everybody meets and plays there and hangs there. It's the social hub of our community. Only then did we focus on economic development. But we did so out of crisis, because our commercial tax rate had dropped so quickly. We can achieve both. It requires vision. You've got that from the plan. It requires access to federal and state funding. I'll bring that. It requires building, collaboration within the community, so we don't get slammed on Facebook. It doesn't have to be one or the other. It can be both. That's the selectmen's vision. We can have both. They're not mutually exclusive. But it takes a lot of consensus building, and it takes a passion for that plan. I've got a passion for your 2015 master plan. I don't know who did it. I saw the names. I didn't recognize a lot of them. But it's, I guess I did, then, Lou. It's extraordinarily well-written. The vision is clear. The action steps are doable. You just need the prime movers to move the ball and have an impact on this community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question. Mr. McCrisky.
I'll introduce myself. Joe McCrisky. I'm the, I like it when it says it, the dean of the delegation. I've been here a long time.
Good to see you, Dean.
And it's fun, but I would agree with you. You know, sometimes being involved with your own town, you know, it's interesting. So just wanted to go on town finance. I'm going to hit you with a couple of questions, and all these questions are what I'm jotting down based on your comments and other just further. Myself and Select Board Member Kaybee were, you know, blessed to have that first thing where you came out basically just talking about the finances of the town, which was enlightening that you did that. So give me an idea. I don't know if that was all you did on that, if you've looked in further. I'd like to get your, you know, looking at our budgets right now, you know, DLS and DOR information that you had brought up previously, if you wanted to just very quickly give me a follow-up to that.
Sure. It's the analysis that's done by Department of Local Services, which is a division of the Department of Revenue, where I've gained a pretty clear insight and perspective, not only of your current financials, but on four-year, five-year trends. And there are some red flags, but they're easily fixable. The first red flag is that your revenue by source, not including enterprise funds and CPA funds, have been flat since 2019. You need to build the revenue stream. And that can be done quickly. And your fire department's doing an extraordinary job of building its revenue stream. It's the primary focus, the primary component to your free cash. The second thing is, since '19, revenues have grown at a slower per capita rate than expenses. That's a second red flag. I met with the DLS inspector for several hours, and I pointed that out to her, and she hadn't noticed it yet. These are all early indicators of the need to generate tax revenue. And again, it's not either-or. It doesn't mean by raising taxes. It means by working as they saved in the '70s, wicked smart. We need to find ways to generate commercial revenue, tax revenue, without impacting the residential tax base. Education seems to be in line as a percentage of your total budget, which was good to see. Long-term debt, you're highly leveraged. You know that. That was a choice three years ago. That was a prudent choice. And after having read the note on that loan, it was very prudent. It was very smart. It was, you got extraordinary rates over a long-term basis. We're going to see in the next few years increased state and federal funding to cities and towns, to municipalities. You saw, you just received substantial funding in this past year. But we have to do our job at the local level. You have, when you have a budget that's $120-plus million, there are tremendous opportunities for efficiencies. There are tremendous opportunities for consolidation. There are great opportunities for increased revenues. With the policy decisions that I would recommend to the Board and hope to have adopted with your support, we could make a lot of changes. And I'm not talking about relieving people of their duties that would impact your collective bargaining agreements. I'm talking about doing business in a more efficient way. And that starts with building consensus around the budget process. The budget process, to me, is the most exciting time of the year. I know that says a lot about me. It's the most exciting time of year. It's the period where we get every stakeholder involved with achieving the policy decisions as set out by the Select Board. If you say that we want to have one year where we're not using free cash to balance our budget, then we can do a plan with those guidelines that allows us to use, to store our free cash, increase our stabilization fund, or use it for small capital investments, but not use it in our operating. I have never used free cash in an operating budget. And I would like to be able to show you...
Free cash ain't free.
Exactly. I would like to be able to show you how to build an operating budget and build consensus around that budget without using free cash. One last point. I think we're over, but I do want to make this point, if I may. During COVID, remember, we initially thought our budgets were going to be gutted. We weren't going to get any state aid. We weren't going to get any help from the federal government. We weren't going to get meals tax. We weren't going to get anything, right? And there was, if you recall, that was right around March. So our budgets were done. When teams are led by the use of common objectives, consensus around common objectives, they will do anything to support the town they work for. We went back to every union... We went back to every union and said to them, we've got a choice. We need your input. In order for us to submit a balanced budget to town meeting, we have to cut 2.1 million dollars. On a $40 million budget, that's 20%. We can either do it by just chopping the lowest people on the totem pole, which I don't recommend, they're human beings, or we can do it through consolidation, efficiency, getting rid of outsourcing, doing it internally with our, with our own resources to cut all the fat out of town government. And it starts with everybody taking a wage freeze. We're going to suspend the labor increases. We got 100% support from all five unions. They suspended their increases. I wouldn't have done it if they didn't agree. We did no layoffs. We, we, well, we did a couple of layoffs, forgive me. We still had to do a couple of layoffs, two or three. We balanced our budget, and then right before the town meeting, we got money from the state and didn't have to do it. And we brought those people back. But you can achieve anything when everybody shares the same interpretation of the problem. And when they understood that to freeze their wages means nobody has to lose their job, they were part of the solution, not part of the problem. Budgeting is, to me, is the time of year. It's a six-month period, starting with policymaking at the board, where the town manager's job is to build consensus in the community. With the FinCom, build consensus through an advisory group we should ask for and listen to their advice. But you make the decisions. And if we can't reach a decision, I introduced in Kingston a process that we use in the State House. It's called a conference committee. If we still have five line items where the selectmen and the FinCom don't agree, and they're going to disagree with it at a town meeting, I asked the chair to bring two representatives from the Select Board and the chair for, for two representatives from the Finance Committee, and we work it out in conference committee. And we emerge from that, not with smoke coming out the chimney, but we emerge from that with a budget that both bodies agree they will support the conference committee recommendation. And it works. We don't want to go to town meeting arguing over four line items.
My time is back, back on. I, I, we are running a little bit late, but thankfully I don't actually have a question here, but I do want to have, actually, it's a very brief question. I'd just say that, that after this meeting, probably first thing in the morning, I'll be sending each of the candidates an email with, with, with a sort of case study, a, you know, a sample of, it'll say something along the lines of, you know, Mr. Town Manager, this is a problem that we're having. Can you tell me how you prioritize this problem?
Terrific.
So, so you'll get that in the morning. It'll also be CC'd all the members of the board, and ultimately it would be a public document, just as a heads up. So we won't need that until, so I'll give you a deadline in the email when to get it back by, but it would be after the weekend.
Would it be a word limitation on?
Not necessarily, though. But just really, I just want to make sure that you're aware that, like, what I'm looking for is not like a solution, like you don't, you, everything should sort of be as part of that, the document, but more of how you prioritize the problem and sort of, sort of break it down into its pieces. The question I, I have though is, is, as, it says in the document that you saw when you came in, I did invite candidates, members of the Select Board to reach out to you if they have any follow-up questions. I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with that.
Certainly. Would you like my phone number and email address?
Yeah, we can, we can grab that on, or get it from, from a community paradigm.
I'd be delighted to hear.
Perfect. So that was my only question, so I'll just pass this along to Mr. Carrera.
Thank you.
I apologize for not introducing myself.
Scott, I know who you are.
I run a business in town that's 61 years old, belonged to my dad. I bought it from him, and he told me, don't go past 65 like he did. He says, get out. But I don't know if I can let go, you know? But I was told when I first got on the board, I did nine years prior. I did six years on Concom. I did five on the zoning, and I did nine on finance. So that's why I, I'm enlightened to a lot of what you've said, that, that you, you want to work and, and not fight with us, because I used to just use the term, it's, it's just only math.
That's a great record of service.
I, I appreciate that. I, I, I love my town. That's why I'm here again. So this is, you know, 11 years, 12 years later, I'm back here. And my wife is the town clerk, and we keep a lot of things separate. To touch back on when we were talking about the team thing, I, I like how you said that to reward them with, you know, kudos and stuff like that. I'm sure you know Mayor Yunus.
Dear friend.
Right. I've spoken to him, and then I saw him do a statement when he was taking care of Bourne Straight and Out there program. He wrote a statement that municipalities should not be rewarding people with stipends and cash. Only the public sector or the private sector does that, because they have that ability. He says they should be building strong bonds, like you said, with the, the community satisfaction that they've achieved something and that they could move to possibly another level in their job. That's why I have a, a trouble with the word team. I, I just want people who come in for jobs, and we've finally just gotten a job description so that they're not tailor-made to somebody who came in and, oh, jeez, I don't know if they're, let's do this.
I heard your comments at the meeting.
Sorry, there, I'm very matter-of-fact. Things are black and white with me. But I, I appreciate what you said, and thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Let me comment on that talent, that job description comment. In the business world, the clients I, I serve and the companies I bought, I bought eight companies in five years, all of them broken. I never bought a company that was working well. To your point from the other night, in all eight of them, they tailored job descriptions to the capabilities of the person they wanted to put in that job. What happens when you do that is a month later, you find you need to hire another person for the things that are not getting done, that you hired that person to do. And it becomes this creep. And when I say, what I said earlier, that we don't necessarily have to make cuts, we need to change processes in how we hire, how we train, how we coach. And that's what I'll bring to the town. I, I train senior executives. It's over 200 now in municipalities and in private sector. And they all want to know how things have changed so dramatically that it's so much harder, and it's so easy to blame the younger generation. It's way too easy. As I said in our first interview, and Stephen and Joe were there, there's been a paradigm shift in how we manage people. When I was at Clean Harbors, I was the most significant command and control leader you've ever met. If I behaved that way today, there'd be a mutiny. What Posner and Kuntse in their leadership document, which is the only one that's ever been written through the eyes of those we call followers, is that the paradigm has shifted. We're no longer up here. We're down here supporting the team. It's become inverted. I didn't promote the change. I don't always like the change, but the change is real. And I think any great leader has to recognize that in the final analysis, when they have to make the tough decisions, they'll make them. The great leaders will do that. And I know in the town of Stoughton, I'll be called on if chosen to make some tough decisions, and I'll never back down from them. But I also recognize that my job as a teacher, a coach, as a leader, is to support the people under my supervision. And they will grow professionally every single day. It's going to be one of our guiding principles, continuous professional development. And that's what I'll bring to the town every day. There are simple things we have to change in the dynamic. People still refer to folks that work for them as subordinates. Have you ever broken down the Latin derivation of that? Sub-ordinary. Less than ordinary. Who wants to work for that guy? Our job is to lift people up and help them to be the best they can. We're, we're going to have a lot of conversations about this, Scott. I think one day when you say to me, Tom, you've built a great team, it's probably going to be my greatest success. I look forward to that day.
You have to move on to Mr. Gino.
You just answered my second question.
That's wonderful. To your satisfaction?
Close enough. I might give you a call, but.
I'd love to talk.
Right.
Thank you, Lou.
Because we didn't have that just a while ago.
Understood. I'll anxiously wait for that call. And if I may, Madam Chair, and if any of folks feel more comfortable in person, I'm happy to drive here and have a cup of coffee. I'd be delighted to do that.
So I'll continue the conversation about teamwork. Stoughton has excellent department heads. Describe the town manager's role and relationship with department heads. How would you establish a leadership position? How will you promote communication and teamwork within and across departments?
The first response that immediately comes to my mind is, I'm going to have to earn it, and that relationship will be based on trust. I'm the type of leader that is somewhat in the middle between a micro leader and a macro leader. What will be important to me with every one of the department heads is that we meet one-on-one and understand between the two of us clearly, which requires me to do a lot of listening at first. What is it you do? How do you do it? Why do you do it that way? Where can I be helpful to you in doing your job? Again, the inverted pyramid. They're not going to hear a lot from me in terms of corrective action unless they're not implementing the plan. And the plan has to be built through collaboration. Again, it can't just be topped up. The Select Board will give me their policy initiatives. The Select Board are going to weigh in on the job descriptions. The Select Board will sign off on the key objectives that I want to achieve every year. Once I have that mandate, I'll go to each department head, and I will share with them the policy that has come forth from the Select Board. And then we'll collaborate on how to achieve those objectives. I earn people's trust very, very quickly, and I'm a strong believer, as I said in my introduction, in transactional honesty. If, if, if a department head is doing great work, they're going to hear it from me. They're going to hear platitudes. If the, and they'll hear them publicly. If the department head is not working the plan, I'm a prodigious planner. We'll know where we're going. We'll agree on how to get there. But if they're not implementing the plan, they'll hear it from me in a very dignified and private way, and we'll get back on course. I have this, this philosophy that I've used in every company I've acquired and turned around. If a person isn't doing what's expected of them, if they're not implementing the plan, we've got to ask ourselves, is it aptitude or is it attitude? Is the cause aptitude or attitude? If the cause is aptitude, that's my responsibility to teach, coach, train them. On the other hand, if it's attitude, they know exactly what to do. They just choose not to do it. That's a different problem, and it's something I'll deal with very directly, but again, in a dignified way. There's a great theory. You give praise by shouting out the window. You place blame by looking in the mirror. The most important thing I'll do for my department heads is I'll have their back. It doesn't mean I'll cover up for them, but I'll work hard to make them successful. And over time, and I'm talking a very short period of time, where you've got experience turning companies around that are broken. And in every case, we turned it around without changing people. We turned it around by inspiring them to do better and to focus on a plan to build a team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have additional time? Are you, are you done though?
I'm done. Thank you very much.
It's, it's amazing, Deborah. I wrote down how, how would you approach staff meetings or department head meetings, and would you do it one-on-one? And it come right out of, it come right out of the gate. I did, it was, that was good.
May I comment on that, though, if you have still time? I, I'm a big staff meeting person, but not as a free-flowing town meeting. There's a formal agenda. Each person, each week, it's 90 minutes long, will give whatever they'd like to give in terms of information that promotes their department objectives. But then we focus on the agenda of the town manager's office, which is your agenda, to make sure that we're moving the policies and procedures and initiatives of the Select Board. I'm your representative. I don't create policy. I, I implement it. So I'll, through staff, make sure we do that. But what you find when you have staff meetings like that, and if you haven't realized this yet, I like laughter. We, we keep things light. We're very serious when we have to be, but we, I liked laughter. We kid around a lot. The key is to make sure that everybody walks out of there feeling like they are part of that staff and integral. I used to say to them in Kingston, you are the chief operating officers of your department. You're in charge. Don't look left, don't look right when making the right or wrong decision. If you don't know what to do, you don't need an appointment. Just walk through my door, and I'll talk it through and make the best decision. But they need to know that they're not just implementers. We need them to do critical thinking on an ongoing basis. And just so you know, I've spoken to all of your town managers, all of your, most of it, I, I haven't talked to Mr. Tinsel. I didn't think that was quite appropriate, but I spoke to all of the others. And all of them speak glowingly about your department heads. They say it's one of the strengths of the organization, which I was very delighted to hear.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky.
His answers are too long.
I know.
It's great, though. I just wanted to get your thoughts on this, on town's changing, the face of the town is changing, uses. We're, we're embarking on zoning enforcement to try to get things to people that are moving in, starting businesses in residential areas, construction businesses, back in dump trucks and back goes into residential neighborhoods. So development and integrity of neighborhoods. You know, we have some areas of our town that are beautiful, peaceful areas, and we have the, the areas closer to the bulk of the traffic. You mentioned what Norwood was able to do on alleviating traffic, Stoughton can't do with, you know, Route 120, 138, 27 going through and 139 coming in from the highway. We are ground zero. I know that you'll be able to get to some other legislators, because the state, you know, basically conveniently doesn't recognize Stoughton Center. About a quarter of a mile before and after Route 138 hits Stoughton Center, State Road picks up all sorts of money for that. Nothing coming into downtown Stoughton unless it was just a grant for revitalization of roads and sidewalks, which everybody gets. So how do you feel we address integrity of our neighborhoods in that downtown area and all over the town? You know, there are some that are beautiful, quiet, little wooded area neighborhoods are beautiful, but most of the development is going to come in that central downtown, one square, two square mile. How do we protect our neighborhoods for the people that live there and have made investments while, you know, trying to attract the development? Just your thoughts on that.
Well, thank you for that. It's very interesting, having had a long career in business and now a 15-year career in, in the public sector. They're not as different as we think. In business, as in, as in the municipal sector, growth for the sake of growth is not usually good. I've, I've seen too many companies grow like that, their margins go like that. I've seen too many communities, experienced communities sprawl without a plan, and it turns out, you know, what did we do? How did we end up here? What, what's happened? I would bring professional planners into a room to look at the whole town in its entirety. There's one thing that's for certain. You need a town center that brings community together. I don't want to shock anybody, but it may not be that town center. If you look at the community as a whole, and don't think of development in terms of just development, think of it in terms of redevelopment. If we can't get the Commonwealth to move their roads that go through our center, which make it impossible to make a placeholder-type environment where people work and play together, then we, we have to think of another part of town that can be that community outreach, that community meeting center, that place where people come to, to play and to meet and to hang and, and enjoy each other's town. I look to the town of Norwood, excuse me, the town of Westwood when I say that. As you, they had the same problem, where there were too many state roads that went through their center. So what they did is they brought in a private sector developer. The town helped them raise bond money to do it, and they put a major facelift. I'm not talking about the old expression, lipstick, lipstick on a pig. I'm talking about a major redevelopment downtown, but it was still a commercial and retail base. It remained, their downtown took on a plot, not people going to meet, but it looks magnificent. They moved their meeting areas like Kingston did. Our downtown is just like Stoughton's downtown. That's why we built, we bought land and developed a, a recreation center of fields. Everybody who meets everybody in our town does so at that facility. They do concerts there. They do soccer, football, baseball. They do Christmas night at the fields. It's a year-round facility. All it was was forest land, and if we didn't buy forest land, we would have redeveloped old, broken-down properties and built a center that's not in the center, but it's the meeting place. The, the key is not where it is. The key is what is it? So you can dress up downtown. I'm not saying this is the plan. I'm saying there are options to think about, and my role as your town manager will be to facilitate discussion on all the multiple options, your ideas, everybody's idea, and come up with a. options, your ideas, everybody's idea, and come up with a, with a plan that works. But don't look at what, I'm sorry I said it that way. I would suggest you not look at just the land that's available. Look at where dilapidated, broken-down enterprises are, and then imagine what they can be. The center doesn't have to necessarily be the center that's been in place for 200 years, almost 300 years. I'm not suggesting we move the center, that may be blasphemous, but at least think outside the box about where could our community meeting place be? I've looked at a lot of towns to get ideas on Kingston, and that's how we came up with our plan.
Mr. Coulter, you have five minutes? Do you have any questions for us or if you would like to give a closing statement?
I didn't prepare a closing statement, but let me say this to you. Two years ago, I retired from the public sector when I left Kingston. I said I'd never serve again, never. Then I was going back into business, make a fortune and, and work half his amount of time. And it's bothered me since that day. So I, although I get my retirement now, if you choose me and I take this job, I have to freeze that retirement. I'll be freezing a $50,000 a year salary and lifetime health insurance. And I'll be putting myself at risk that I will not get that health insurance back after I retire again. And I'm okay with that. This is the only job I'm applying for. It's the only job I want. It's the only job I'll take. I know Stoughton because I lived next door. You were my big brother. You were the, you were my close-knit cousins. I worked here, my children were born here, we lived right on the Stoughton-Brockton line where we had all three of our children. I love this town. This isn't a job for me. I wouldn't come out of retirement for a job. I come out of retirement for this job. I've studied hard. I bet I've put 50 hours of preparation time in here. I'm a hard worker. I believe in results. I respect the authority of the board and that the board members have each been elected by the citizens of Stoughton as a former elected official. For that reason alone, you will get my utmost respect, support, and loyalty. One thing I will say to you in closing is, I will not involve myself in the political process. As the town manager, I'm here to run, should you choose me. I'm here to run the affairs, the business affairs of the town, to help build relationships with staff, to build their professional capabilities, to communicate with citizens, to collaborate, to build consensus. My days in politics are behind me. And I found out from the title of Kingston, your consultant Bernie said to me, Tom, you are like the sixth selectman. I won't be the sixth selectman. I work for you. There'll be a very clear delineation between your authority and my responsibilities. I really appreciate this time. I've enjoyed getting to know all of you over the past month and a half. There's something in each one of you that I find very appealing, and it would be my great honor to work with you and for you. So I thank you for your time, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask you--
Yes.
--one word answer. How many years would you commit to the town?
I would love, I would love to stay here for at least seven to eight years.
Thank you. That's enough.
Okay.
Steve.
Steve, next page.
We're going to do this a lot.
I thought I had time left.
I thought he was out of time.
Was it?
Yeah. Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Folks, what I have done, because it's customary in the legislature, I've prepared my opening remarks and I have copies for each of you.
Thank you very much.
Please take them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Since first grade, that's an accomplishment.
That is. Thank you, Steve. Should I take one and pass it around?
She's a very forgiving woman.
Her parents raised me. I wasn't quite a foster child, but her parents took me in when we were 12. We've been together ever since.
That is so wonderful.
I call her every day to remind her how crazy she is.
Bye-bye now. Bye-bye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Steve, thank you so much.
It was great seeing you personally.
Well, thank you. I promise. Oh, phone number, 508?
Hello. It's good to meet you.
Hi, Mike McGovern?
Yes.
Hello there.
Hello.
Thank you very much. Sorry, we are starting a little bit late. I hope that you had an opportunity to read the, the letter of our process that was outside. So you'll have an idea of, of how this is being conducted. Did you have a copy?
Yes, I did. I read it. I was on the table.
So we are running a little bit behind, but we're going to do our best to kind of stick as best we can to these schedules. So we'll just, we'll begin with, actually, you have five minutes to introduce yourself if there's an opening statement you'd like to give. Feel free.
Sure. I'll be quick. I think most of you have my resume and you're sure you've looked it over. So I'm very excited about being here. I mentioned that in the screening committee. I have been looking at Stoughton since it was first posted. I think it's an excellent fit for me. Just to give you quickly a little background, I started out working for Paul Song as her president back in the early 90s. My next-door neighbor worked for him for 10 years while she was in both the houses and so I really couldn't live on the street any longer if I didn't go to work for him. Wasn't sure what I was going to do after that. Ended up going to work for a city council in Boston. And I spent a handful of years working in the city council, then went on to work at the state house for a state representative out of Lowell who just left, believe it or not, from '94 up until, I think, last April. He became the city manager in Lowell. From there, I ended up doing some anti-tobacco work with the city of Lowell and with the UMass Lowell, University of Lowell at the time. And from there, I worked at Great Lowell Tech. I worked directly for the superintendent as the chief of staff de facto, coordinator of school information, and I developed the school foundation as well. And at that point, I became in 2014, I was there at Great Lowell Tech for about 11 years, and in 2014 became the assistant city manager in Lowell. And then off to Shirley, and I've been to Shirley as the town administrator for the last four and a half years.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Carrera, you're up.
I figure, I, right out of the gate. When, when you, I'm Scott Carrera.
Nice to meet you.
Yep. I'm, I'm a lifelong Stokeite and graduated from Stoughton, and I run a business here currently. It's 61 years old and my father started it, so now I have it. So how would you foster communication with your department heads and, and the staff? When you come in, would you meet with department heads separately or would you bring them all in in one, one group and lay it out? You tell.
So I'm, I assume that you mean, you know, when I, if I was fortunate enough to get the job.
Right.
So, no, that's an excellent question. And so for me, what I would do is initially, and I was there on Monday talking to a lot of the staff and just to introduce myself and I love the building, it's what I'm really comfortable with. And so what I would do is, in the first day or two, I would actually be walking around the building and introducing myself and meeting the staff and, you know, getting a chance to talk to them and let them see who I am, right? Because obviously, over the first couple of days, there's going to be a lot of speculation of who this new person is, what is he or she like, and, and all those questions. And I think really just to kind of nip that in the bud, I'd actually walk around for the first couple of days, you know, introduce people. And then I would call that larger, kind of classic department head meeting and, and really give each person a chance to kind of talk about, you know, who they are, where they've come from, you know, what are some of their goals? And, but one of the bigger things out of that meeting would be to ask the department heads to go back and, you know, write down what they're working on, what priorities they have in the immediate future, you know, over the next, you know, month or so, also over the next three months, also over the next six months. Give that a couple of days or so, and then I actually go back to their office and sit with them and discuss what they have. And that will give me an opportunity to understand what they're working on, what their priorities are, and how I can be of assistance. Every place I've been, whether it was at Great Lowell Tech, it was at the city of Lowell, or even Shirley, which is a very small building, a lot of the times, I'll actually go to the departments. I'm not really that comfortable with, you know, you know, hey, can you come up to my office to the ivory tower? You know, I prefer to actually take that walk, go down and sit with the staff and, you know, and, and whatever issues they have or whatever and, and work with them that way. I mean, obviously, there are times, right, that people are coming up to your office and, you know, you need to have meetings and that type of thing. I think the biggest thing really, like I said, is, is introducing myself right away to the staff, getting an idea of what they're working on, what their priorities are. And, you know, the other thing, too, is it's not really, you know, I'm sure throughout all of these types of processes and, you know, probably during the screening committee and tonight, you'll hear about listening, right, and learning. And I don't think that that should just be something that happens within the first, you know, couple of weeks, month, or whatever. I think it should be ongoing, right? I should always be listening and learning to the staff. It's not something that just happens, you know, for the first week and then that's it. So it's a partnership.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Joe McCrisky, we met on the first one.
Yes.
Tell me about the town of Stoughton. Tell me what, what you've learned. I mean, everybody does research for anything when they're going to be ready for an interview. What, what would you be looking to do? Where's, where are you going to start? What do you know about the town? What kind of research have you done about the town? Criticisms, suggestions, you know, where you could potentially be the town manager? Where are you going to take us and how?
So, I mean, for me, once again, it's about fit. And I think we talked about it in the screening committee, talked a little bit here right now. I grew up in the city of Lowell, obviously worked for the city of Lowell, I'm now in a town setting. So I have those, the best of both worlds, as I like to think about it. You know, I'm not looking to bring Lowell to the town of Stoughton. You know, I'm looking to bring my experience and all of the knowledge I've gained from, at the time, the fourth largest city, there pretty much wasn't anything we didn't see. So it's also about the way a community is, right? And, and my wife and I, we, we have a house in Chelmsford, we have a house down here in Plymouth, so we're back and forth and everything. Eventually, we want to get down to Plymouth. But like I said, since this has been posted, you know, my wife and I have been through the town a number of times. And just the look of it, for me, the, the life, the activity, all of your development that is, is going on along 138 and coming into the town, that's what I like, right? It reminds me of a, of a Chelmsford, a Bill Ricker, a Wilmington, a Tewksbury, communities up in my area that are alive. And, and that's why I think this would be a perfect fit for me. In terms of what I would be looking to do, once again, it really would be about, you know, getting my feet wet. I'm not looking to come in immediately and just say, let's shake up the world. It really would go to listening to what the staff is saying, what they're working on, what projects that they're dealing with. I spoke with the economic development director. I mean, that's obviously a big priority, as always in every community, economic development. You know, I talked to the, the DPW superintendent and that you're going through a time right now where you're going from five days of trash pickup down to four, and that can always be a little dicey. People aren't complicated, right? They want their streets plowed, their potholes fixed, their trash picked up. And so I think, you know, kind of helping the staff to navigate whatever they're working on right now and dealing with is, is really my first priority. And, and so that's, you know, what I look at and how I would come in in my first handful of months. Obviously, I'm coming into a time of budget season, and, you know, that's something that I'm, you know, very, very familiar with. I deal with the budget in the town of Shirley, worked with the budget and the CFO in the city of Lowell, and getting ready in that budget for the next fiscal year and year upcoming town, town meeting, so.
Hi, how are you? My name is Deborah Roberts and I'm the chair of the select board. I've lived in Stoughton for about 33 years now, and I just love this town. My question is, please describe your experience in creating budgets and managing finances as well as your financial management strategies for ensuring organization know sustainability. Please share an experience that illustrates your approach to capital budgeting. Stoughton's goal is to maintain its excellent credit rating while also keeping taxes to a minimum. How would you try to do more with less?
Every place, right? Every place is always looking to do more with less. It's always a challenge, and I think it's going to get greater, especially over the next year or so, depending on what happens with the economy and possibly a recession and those types of things. My budget experience, it's obviously in two different areas, right? We had in the city of Lowell, who I worked hand-in-hand with the CFO. We had, at the time when I was there, our budget was $375 million, very, very large. I then go to the town of Shirley and, you know, we're talking about a $16.5 million budget. The difference, though, is that where, in the city of Lowell, of being on that team, if you will, there, and ultimately, at the end of the day, it's the CFO and the deputy CFO that are putting that. I'm there sitting with them and working on the budget, but it's a lot different than me being in Shirley where I'm the one actually putting the budget together. So my philosophy is, you know, and I don't really even have a choice in, in the town of Shirley, it's about being fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible. I faced a lot of financial challenges in the town of Shirley within the first six months, and it was something that I, I started in July of 18. And I really knew deep down that, that I was probably going to have to bring somebody in financially to take a look at what was going on. And the deputy CFO came to the town, worked, came to the town as the town accountant in December or so. And she was actually filling out a number of the state reports, the recap sheet, the Schedule A, and the balance sheet. And she said to me, I'm, I'm not signing any of these. She said, none of the numbers match up, and I'm just not doing it. I said, we need to bring somebody in, don't we? And she said, yes. So that started a three-year-long relationship with Clifton, Lawson, Allen. I knew that we had to go outside professionally, and it turns out that our books had not been, cash and receivables had not been reconciled for about four years. It was a disaster. And then on top of it, you had a, I walked into a time when there had been a recall with the select board. And, you know, many of the boards were kind of fractured in those relationships between staff, boards, the select board. Really, it was, it was tenuous at best. And so I had to rebuild that trust with the FinCom. And what I realized at the very beginning was that they weren't looking to micromanage my budget, all they wanted was information, right? And that's all they wanted. And I, you know, we have a fantastic relationship with FinCom now at this point, a longtime member, 26 years. You know, I'm sure if he wants to watch this, I won't be, I'm not saying it then out of school, he'll tell you, a little curmudgeonly. And he decided, he asked not to be reappointed because, in June, because he felt that the town was in the best place financially that it hadn't been in a long time, and he felt comfortable walking away at that point. In terms of, you know, what we had to deal with, my philosophy, though, is it's really about being inclusive. We did it in Lowell, we brought in the department heads, and we had that sit-down with them. We do it in Shirley, obviously a lot smaller, but we bring the department heads in, ask them what they need for their operational expenses for the upcoming year, if there are any increases, ask them what they need for their capital requests. And, and we build that as a team. And then I keep the FinCom in the loop. Obviously, during the process, we meet twice a week for about three months, every Tuesday and Thursday. The select board is fantastic, I have a great relationship with them. I keep them in the loop of what's going on financially. So, you know, it's, it's really about being inclusive and about being upfront and honest. As I say to residents, I say, come on in, come on into my office, I'll show you the budget. It's not my money, it's your money. I'll sit with you if you want to talk about where your finances are. In terms of, you know, some of the procedures, like in the city of Lowell, for example, what we implemented in our first year there back in 14 was, in that last quarter of the fiscal year, we implemented both a hiring review committee and a spending freeze. of the fiscal year, we implemented both a Hiring Review Committee and a Spending Freeze. And I sat in on both of those. And the spending freeze, what it was, is that anything over a $5,000 PO, we use Munis in the city of Lowell, and anything over $5,000 had to be approved by the CFO and by me. And the Hiring Review Committee, it was the Director of HR, it was the CFO, Deputy CFO, and me as well. And, you know, if there was a vacancy within that time period, you know, we weren't going to say, no, you can't hire somebody, but the department head would come to us and explain why they needed to fill that position right away. And, you know, and if they could make the case, and if it was justified, then we would okay it, or we would wait until the next fiscal year, the start of the next fiscal year. So, you know, that's where we're at in terms of my, you know, right now, we have not used any one-time monies in Shirley since I've been there to balance our budget. We're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, we're being proactive instead of being reactive at this point. I have DOR in there right now, and they're reviewing all of my financial policies and procedures with us. I have a Community Compact Grant, we're working with the Collin Center to actually do five-year budget forecasting. And one thing that we've done, we ended up receiving about, you ask about the capital piece of it, right?
Yes.
Two-point-three million dollars in Opera Funds. And now, the rules have changed, we received less than $10 million, so now, at this point, you can use it anyway. But initially, it was those buckets that you had to use it in, unless you could prove out revenue loss. Well, Clifton Lawson proved out revenue loss of about 1.3, which meant I could use it really for anything. And so what I started to do was, I paid for my FY22 capital plan with free cash. We've, and then my, the last capital plan, I am using Opera, I used Opera Funds, 363,000. So I'm trying to not take on any debt. That's, that was one of my goals over the last two years, was really reduce the town's debt. In terms of, we have doubled our stabilization since I've gotten there, it was, you know, once again, you know, not large, right, but it was about 700,000 in our general stabilization, we're up to a little over 1.7 million. Our cap stabilization was at about 300, it's just a tad under a million dollars. And at last town meeting, we actually created a third stabilization, a special purpose stabilization fund, to address two needs that I have, an old iconic center town hall, and to deal with some of our culvert issues that we have. But our center town hall is, if you Google Shirley, that's probably the image that's going to come up, it looks like Sturridge Village in the center of town. The building really is decaying, it's, and the committee came to the Select Board about a year ago, and they said, can we have some money to do some painting and some other things? And I looked at the photos, and I said, this is a far bigger project than some paint, and if we're going to do it, let's do it right. So I actually used some Opera money and hired an architectural engineering company, historical architectural engineering company. And they came out and did an entire assessment from the basement up to the chimney. And now, at this point, I have a blueprint that, you know, that not only tells me everything that needs to be fixed, but it also gives me a timeline. So if we only have X amount to spend in, we'll say, Phase One of the first year, or whatever it may be, then these are your priorities, fix these first. It didn't make sense for me to say, all right, let's put some paint on the exterior while you have a hole in the roof and, you know, the walls are all, you know, falling apart. So that's, you know, sorry about that, a lot of, you know, long-winded everything, but finances, it's been a, it's been a challenge, but I'm extremely proud where we're at right now. You know, we're in a far, far better place, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chito.
I'm interested in your, your experience before you came to Shirley right now, because probably a whole lot of things that you do based on what you learned and so on before. So I sort of thought about breaking your work history up, there's the Legislative Aid piece, the Assistant Town Manager, City Manager piece, and... So you were working, say, City Manager in a place that's about three times as big as Stoughton, and now you're working in a place that's about a quarter of the size of Stoughton. So my, I guess I also wanted to find out about your Great Lowell Technical High School work. So what was the work environment that you were in, in terms of who you dealt with, in terms of education sophistication, in terms of what, how you had to interact with people? How did the job prepare you for your current town administrative position? And what conditions led you to leave the position that you were in, in order to move ahead and did the next job that you took, sort of satisfy your expectations? So that's sort of what I'd like you to do for each of those three areas, just very, very briefly.
So, I mean, I think in all of my positions, in terms of who I deal with, you know, we deal with everybody, and it's always been that way. It especially as a Legislative Aid, it does not matter who's on the other end, they get the same treatment, whether it's the, you know, the Speaker of the House that's calling down, looking for my boss, or a constituent who, you know, at that moment, whatever they're calling for is the most important thing in their life at that time. You know, I think a lot of it has to, how I work and how I operate, a lot of it has to do with how I was brought up. You know, I didn't come from much. My dad was the head of the custodians in school buildings in Lowell, very, very intelligent man, but he didn't go to Harvard or anything like that, you know? And my mom, she grew up in summer, one of twelve, they didn't come from much by any stretch. And so I think it's really, you know, it was instilled in me how you treat people, and it's, that's what it comes down to, it's just about being respectful. You know, in terms of, you know, my time at Great Lowell Tech, once again, you know, at Great Lowell Tech, there were eighty percent of, you know, and just quickly, you know, every place I've left is because I was looking for new challenges and looking for something different, right? But, you know, in terms of Great Lowell Tech, eighty percent of our students came from the city of Lowell, then Drake at Tingsboro and Dunstville. A lot of our students didn't come from much in the city of Lowell. And it really opened my eyes to the educational process up there and how inclusive it was.
The issue of interacting with people and what their backgrounds were was basically not people you service, but the people you basically communicated with on a day-to-day basis.
So I, maybe...
And so I didn't want you to think that I was...
Oh, no, 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 no. No, 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 I did not think that way at all. I, you know, so for me, it's really, I guess, probably the simpler answer maybe for you, and I'm more than happy to answer more questions from you, is really kind of my management style and who I am and how I interact with staff. And, you know, for me, really, wherever I've been...
I guess I was wondering what you, what you learned in each of those areas that allowed you to get to the point where you're doing what you're doing now?
Okay, yeah, I mean, from the State House, you know, it's really about how, you know, to interact people, to, you know, get jobs done. Moving on to Great Lowell Tech, I had to wear many hats, which was great training and gave me a lot of experience in the educational side of government. It brought, it gave me an opportunity to, really, you know, you're dealing with a community of 2,000 people, between staff and students. It gave me an opportunity to work directly for the Superintendent, who gave me free will to work on different projects and become kind of that fixer, if you will. You know, when we had problems in Great Lowell Tech, I was usually the point person that oversaw those, not educationally, but, you know, the IT problem, I became the point person for that. We had a $65 million MSBA project, I was the point person between the Superintendent and the School Committee on that project. So it really honed my skills in terms of project management, which then allowed me to go to the city of Lowell and handle all of those day-to-day operations. And once again, everything flowed through me in terms of day-to-day operations, whether that was Health Department, Board of Health, I mean, DPW, the Inspection Services. So it was really, you know, giving you a chance to become a jack-of-all-trades. It allowed me, it gave me an opportunity to go down to Town of Shirley because I was looking to be the boss. And the town of Shirley, to get me to this point, was an incredible experience. Because in Lowell, when we have these department head meetings, and we have a complete streets project, right, and I'm sitting with the DPW Director, the City Engineer, the Department of Planning and Development, and we all come to an agreement on what the grant is going to be submitted at, right? Well, in Shirley, and they all go back and they write the grant, and they make us look great, in Shirley, I'm the one writing the grant. And I'm the one that has to fill out all of that paperwork with Mass DOT. And so it was an incredible training ground. While the city of Lowell gave me an 80,000-foot view of how to do a complete streets grant or those types of things, Shirley forced me to be the one to dig down deep and get into the nuts and bolts of really your everyday government. And the biggest thing is town meeting and the budget. The budget, really, I was forced to, I had to deal with the budget, nobody else was going to. And like I just mentioned, town meeting, right? I had been to town meeting a number of times, working up at Great Lowell Tech, because three out of the four had town meeting. But to have to write a warrant, which I do in the town of Shirley, I write both the annual and the fall town warrants, and then stand up there in front of the residents and make the case of why the budget needs to pass, why there are increases in the budget, why there are certain warrant articles, we do an entire presentation on all of our warrant articles, even if it's the acceptance of Chapter 90 money, we still do a little slide on that and explain to residents.
You've answered my question. The reason that I asked the question is that a town manager's job is to do the things that you just talked about. And some people are up here and don't have to do the stuff that gets the job done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McGovern, it's good to meet you again.
Yes.
Just to freshen memory, I'm Steve Kayvey, Vice Chair of the Select Board. Let me start by time. So the question I have for you is really around the idea of failure, our experiences with failure, perhaps your own experience with failures, how you've dealt with them, how you've recovered from them. Feel free to use specific examples, but I just kind of want to get an idea of your thoughts around the idea of failure.
It's tough, right? Nobody wants to fail. You know, I think, I had mentioned a moment ago about where I came from and those types of things, and I think also what has kind of shaped me and molded me is, I play, well, I still play hockey, right, but I grew up playing hockey. And, you know, I think that has made me who I am in a lot of ways, you know, going back to the teamwork and all of those things, but failure is a part of that, right? We'd all like to think that we go, you know, 82-1-0, or, and you end up winning the Stanley Cup at the end, and it just doesn't happen. And, you know, you have one or two choices, you can either kind of just get back up or wallow in the mire. And I think it takes a certain person, and I look at the town of Shirley, you know, it has been a big, big challenge, a big challenge. And, you know, there were plenty of days that I could have just said, you know, I can go back to the city, or I can apply for another job. But the Select Board put their faith in me to, you know, I came there to help fix the town. And it's easy just to walk away and quit. You know, I probably never talked to any of those people in Shirley ever again. And so, but that's not who I am. I came, they had faith in me to come in and help rebuild the town and kind of mend a lot of those fences. And even to this day, you know, as I just mentioned, you know, we're in a far better place, but we still, it's like, my, the Chair of the Select Board, she jokes around, you know, that it was, you know, one step up, ten steps back. And, you know, I said, no, no, it's only one step up and one step back now, we're, you know? It can be, it can be difficult. We had, I had an Assistant Accountant leave the other day, that was on the heels of my custodial, one of the custodial staff members in town, she left in the building, and we had a firefighter leave. So, you know, you try and you try and try, and you just got to keep trying. And, you know, that's really who I am, in terms of specific examples. You know, I think it really comes down to more about challenging situations versus that there's a clear, you know, this thing goes one way or not, and you fail. And I think, I think it's more about that, right? It's, if it was easy, everybody would do it type thing, you know, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We can come back around the horn to Mr. Carrera.
Mike, you're the Human Resource Director in Shirley?
Yes.
You had that role too?
Uh, yes.
We have our own department here.
Yes, I know.
How important is it to have staff that are actually trained and certified and still taking the CEUs, you know, continuing ads to, how important is that to you to make sure that that...
No, I think it's extremely important. I mean, to, just quickly, though, I mean, that was one of the offices that I visited, and I, you know, bowed down again. I said, thank you, thank you. The procurement officer, same thing, I said, oh, there's a procurement officer here, because I do that in Shirley, and I know how difficult that is. In terms of, you know, the continuing education, I think that's important everywhere, right? Not just for the HR piece, but, you know, I tell my staff is, you know, you see a course that you want to sign up for, a training, absolutely, I'll find money for that, because it's going to benefit not only the employee, but it's going to benefit the organization as well. I'm going to Middlesex County Retirement, that's who we have up there, I'm going to a training on benefits next Wednesday. My Assistant Administrator, she went yesterday, and so I'm going. I think it's extremely important because things are always changing.
Changing, exactly.
And, you know, so I think you have to, I don't think it's, you know, that you should, I think that you have to stay up on that, it's extremely critical. And especially because in this day and age, right, you know, if you, if you make a wrong decision about somebody's benefits or something like that, you could really put the town in jeopardy, you know? So you don't want to mess around with people's paychecks or their benefits.
Good deal.
You're good? Okay. Mr. McCrisky.
Mike, we're dealing, Mike local?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mike, we're dealing with struggles in zoning enforcement. The town's growing, you know, we've got, coming in, the face of the town is changing, but we're finding a lot of people moving into residential areas, running construction businesses out of it, dump trucks, big trucks, you know, in a residential area. Zoning enforcement is, one end, integrity of our neighborhoods is very important because we have now cars moving into houses with a small driveway, they park in the street. So we're on our way faster than I would like, than looking more as a city and less of a small town. Yet, where do we talk about economic development? We talk about bringing new businesses into town. Just your thoughts on how you would manage that?
So it's tough. We used to deal with that in Lowell, and I deal with it in Shirley as well, with people, you know, running businesses out of their home and everything, and it's always a challenge, you know, because, you know, you want to have some empathy because, you know, they're just trying to make a living type thing. But at the end of the day, if there's, like you said, a big, you know, dump truck that's a, you know, pickup truck that's in the driveway and it's, you know, blocking your view and all of those type of things, or, you know, they're loading up the trucks at six o'clock in the morning, it's definitely a challenge. We always, in the city, tried to work with the individuals and, you know, see if we could find some type of solution and help them understand that, you know, while we feel bad, you know, the regulations are the regulations, and, you know, there is specific zoning for a reason. It's not, you know, zone industrial or business or those types of things. So, you know, you have to be, once again, going back to, you have to be fair, consistent, and honest, and, you know, and if somebody's doing that, then it needs to be addressed. We had, for me, it's about looking at a situation, right, and then being able to come up with a plan, and developing a plan, and then executing that plan. And for example, in Lowell, we had a lot of absentee landlords, and everything under the sun would happen in it. So what we did was, we identified the top five absentee landlords that our Inspection Services Department dealt with all the time. And so I created this NEED, it was called the NEED, Neighborhood Expedited Enforcement Division. And we brought together all, a number of different apartments in the, in the city between, you know, I sat on as the manager's office. We had police, we had fire, we had inspection services, we had health, you know, really. And we would bring these individuals in and go over the issues that we've been dealing with them. And we would give them about a week to, you know, deal with some of the major complaints. And then we would go in and do inspections of their places. And... with them. And we would give them about a week to, you know, deal with some of the major complaints. And then we would go in and do inspections of their places. And, you know, I thought that was probably one of the most effective new programs that we had implemented in the city. It turns out, out of those five, four out of the five sold most of their properties to other people in the city. And, you know, much more responsible owners. And so, you know, you want to try and be able to work with, with people, but at the end of the day, you know, you have to enforce what, what the rules and regulations are.
And just a follow-up on your attraction of new development and protecting neighborhoods. You thought on that?
So in terms of attracting development, economic development's a huge piece for me. I really enjoy that. You know, but it's, it's, you have to find that right balance. So in the city of Lowell, one of the things that we have, we have the downtown, which is central to the entire city, and then you have all the different neighborhoods filtering in. Those avenues were their central, their main business corridors. And over the years, a lot of the focus had been on that main downtown. And then, you know, the central, the neighborhood business districts were neglected. And so we developed a program and I was, I, it was, I developed that program in the city and sat on that and spearheaded it. And we picked two neighborhood business districts a year and made revitalization efforts in those between, you know, paving the corridor, sidewalk or plantings, sign and facade programs and really basically putting a little tend to love and care on what are, you know, often used more than the main downtown for residents and neighbors. So.
Thank you.
As a continuation of that topic, development, describe the approach you would take to address the desires of members of the community to keep it like it is, as well as those in the community who want to see some new ideas, innovation, businesses, which may change the nature of the community, but expand the tax base. What steps would you take to address all needs effectively and in the best interest of the town?
So I think, you know, economic development slash project development, those types of things right now, I think it's extremely critical right now, planning, it takes the forefront, right? It's more important than ever. Because one of the problems is always the lure of, let's just bring businesses and businesses, businesses, business, right? We want to keep the tax rate low and everything like that. But finding that balance of, you know, if you want to stay at town, you know, have that kind of town charm and that, that feel here while operating, it's, for me, it looks like you have that town piece while you also operate kind of as a city, you know, just in the way your government is structured in terms, departments, I mean. And so finding that balance, and so that's why I say that planning is more critical than ever, right? Because you have to figure out, what do we want to be, right? Do we want to be known as, you know, the life sciences town? Or do we want to be a biotech, a computer, industrial, whatever it may be? And, you know, if you look down the road to Plymouth, right? Somewhere along the way, somebody had the foresight to say, hey, let's put everything under the sun to the right of Route 3, right? You can't find a store in Plymouth that doesn't exist. But yet you look to the left of Route 3, it's still that kind of quintessential, you know, New England coastal community kind of thing. Somebody thought of that, okay? That just didn't happen. And so you don't want to wake up here one day and all of a sudden say, yeah, we just want to bring these businesses and then we'll put a business here, we'll put a business here, one over there. And then 10 years down the road, it's just a mishmash of things that really aren't connected. I think the other piece too is economic development has changed a lot in the last 10 years. When you talk about economic development, you have to lump housing in with that. It really, those two kind of go hand in hand nowadays. I'm in the same boat in Shirley that you are, right? I'm an MBTA community. Your number's about 1,700 for your overlay district. I think though that your zoning, you may, you may luck out, you may, with the way your zoning is, that you already may qualify for the first phase with the overlay.
Yeah, by hanging.
Yeah. You know, I have 750, that's my number in Shirley. I have no idea where I'm going to put 750 units in my small little downtown in Shirley. So, so the housing piece, I think, is definitely a challenge. And the planning, it's extremely critical right now at this point. You know, you're kind of at a crossroads.
Mr. Gino.
So, you left Lowell. Why did you choose Shirley?
I thought you were going to say, I left Lowell and, and went to Chumsford. I live in Chumsford now, I grew up in Lowell, I committed the mortal sin of moving from Lowell to Chumsford about six years ago. They have to stamp my passport every time I go in there. So similarly to going from the city down to the town of Shirley, for me, it was really...
Why such a small town?
It was the challenge, to be honest with you. You know, they had gone through, once again, a lot of tough times. And, and I think it was a match for both, right? It benefited the town of Shirley and I benefited by the town of Shirley. And what I mean by that is they, they were really fractured. You know, they'd gone through the recall, the staff, you know, I'd go see the staff and, and, you know, they'd have their heads down, they, they wouldn't look up or, I mean, they looked up, but it, they had been in a very difficult situation as well.
Did you read about that in the paper or is that why you chose to be?
Almost, almost, oh, really? So, so the Neshoba Valley Voice, which covers the town of Shirley, the Lowell Sun or Media One, the Lowell Sun was the parent company. So every day, we, me, the CFO, the deputy CFO, the executive assistants, the city manager, the city manager and a financial consultant that was working with us, he was Bob Healy, the former city manager in Cambridge for 32 years. Retired, came with us four and a half years. We all ate breakfast together, we also ate lunch together every day. And we would read about Shirley and another community right beside there. And we got to a point where we got confused of which one they were talking about always. But, but yeah, I, for over, well over a year, we would read and go, oh, Jeep is another thing. And, and so when the opportunity came up, my former boss, he decided to retire. The new city manager that came in, I had a very good relationship with her. I had done a lot of political work on the side in, during my life and, and I had done some work, she was a former state senator. But it was time for me to move on. And, you know, and I thought that Shirley was going to be a good opportunity. I, I like the challenges, you know, I enjoy that. And a number of people down within the town, they, they felt that they needed somebody that would come into the town that had a lot of experience. Where a lot of towns were nervous and they would be nervous about, you know, he's coming from the city, the big city is going to bring all this big city politics. That was what the town of Shirley needed. They needed somebody that was going to come in and be a leader and, and, and project that image, that, that confidence of, you know, I'm in charge, we're going to get this done, we're going to get it fixed. And, you know, and it was a lot of work, but, you know, like I said, at this point, you know, I have a great relationship with the board, the town, the residents in town, they come up all the time and just drop in. You know, our town meetings only last about an hour and 15 minutes, believe it or not, we have about... I know, I know. There's about 30 more articles.
We fight over $10 per hour and 15 minutes.
You know, I think that they trust what we're doing, you know? And so, and they let us go through, you know?
Holy crap.
30 minutes, 30 days for us.
You should hire him right away.
I don't know. I mean, if he goes through our town meeting, he'd do what I did last week. It wasn't always that easy when I first got there, trust me. It was, they weren't an hour, 15 minutes. It's about four hours.
We don't get through the introductions in two hours.
So I, I'll be the final question here. And actually, I don't have a question, or I should say, I do have a very easy question, but I'm going to start by just saying that, that as you read in the, in the letter that was sitting outside, you shouldn't have had a chance to read, that I did mention at the end that any Select Board members who have any follow-up questions to feel, feel like they can reach out to the candidates. So I just want to confirm you're comfortable with that.
Yes.
We have your information in the papers that we have available to us. So we have emails and phone numbers. So the question I had was, if you're comfortable with that. Also, I'm going to send each one of the candidates a short email. It's a case study and it'll kind of give you a problem. It'll say, you know, Mr. Town Manager, like, here's a problem that we're having. What I'm, what I'm looking for is really just for, like, you to prioritize the problem, kind of, you can sort of see, like, hey, we'll do step one, step two, step three. You don't have to necessarily, you know, solve the problem as much as just sort of come up with a game plan for how we're going to approach this. There's no right or wrong. You know, it's really just about, about understanding, you know, how you break down a problem, how you, how you think through and prioritize information. So there's certainly no wrong way to do it. But I just want to see, you know, to get an understanding of you as a, as a, as a fit for the way we operate, just to see, you know, who, you know, where the strengths and weaknesses are, how we do it. So I will end with that, but I'll then just say you have initial five minutes. Any questions you have of us? If there's any, you know, if you want to give a closing statement, the time is yours.
So I think for me, really, one of my skills is being able to identify a problem and coming up with that solution, you know, to kind of piggyback on what you just mentioned here about that, that solution. You know, wherever I've been, whether it was the tobacco programs and figuring out how we were going to be the first city in the Commonwealth to go restaurant smoke-free, you know, at Greater Lowell Tech seeing an issue with a lot of our students not being able to afford college and coming up with the school foundation. By the time I left, we had raised over a half million dollars. And then going from the city of Lowell, where we had a number of problems between the neighborhood business districts and coming up with a plan to deal with that, the absentee landlord issue that we had, and really kind of then the next step into the small town of Shirley, which has, you know, sometimes I've encountered more problems. And having that ability to look at a problem, for example, we had a trash problem that right away in my first couple of months realized it was going to cost the general fund about $200,000 in year two of me being there, and that might as well be $20 million for us, had to figure out what we were going to do and developed a trash towed system. And, you know, had to get it passed through town meeting, which everybody said we wouldn't do, no questions asked, that warrant article went right through unanimously. But we had done a lot of prep work with the, the community prior to that. And then to the implementation of it. So yes, we get through the first hurdle, we had to obviously come up with all the finances to make sure it worked prior to that. And then the implementation of it. We, in the Select Board's office, me and the assistant administrator, had to develop a list of residents who were going to get these towed, as we had to implement a whole billing system for it and everything. So, you know, I feel that I have the ability to, to look at situations and come up with solutions. And I think that's probably one of my strengths. The other thing too, and I, you know, I mentioned to a couple of the staff that I talked to that, you know, I'm not a micromanager, I'm not a town accountant, I'm not a town treasurer, I'm not a DPW superintendent. You know, I'm there to assist them and give them support to be able to do their jobs. And that's who I am. I think it's really important to acknowledge when they do something, when they do a good job, a lot of the times when we did it in Lowell, do it in Shirley, that if you have staff that are working on a project that's going to benefit the town, bring them and let them present to you, right? They're the ones that deserve the credit, not me. You know, I'm not looking to come in and turn this place upside down. There's probably a lot of very good people. And that's what your, that's what your own staff said to me, there's a lot of good people, they all get along, most of them get along in the building, that, you know, they're going to be there if I'm fortunate enough to come and however long I stay, there's going to be staff that stay well after I'm gone. And I'm not going to come in to try and ruin somebody's life. Life's not as tough as it is, especially with COVID and the demands that it's put on, especially younger families, you know, once again, I'm there for the support and to help them, you know, do a better job. And hopefully, you know, that they can, they can benefit by, you know, improving themselves, you know, more training, you know, courses that they can take and take up to that next step if your accountant leaves, that the assistant accountant is ready to step in. It's good for employees to be able to see that, hey, if I work hard and I can professionally advance in this organization. And it's good for the organization, i.e. the town, that, you know, you, it's almost impossible to find, you know, staff, especially treasurers and accountants and some of those other planners. And, you know, if you already have a built-in farm system, I mean, it's just seamless transition. So, I do really, I, I look at this area and I say, this, there's activity. I joke around with the people in Shirley, I say, boy, you guys have a lot of trees here. There's a lot of trees. And, and really, you know, it's about a fit for me. You know, my wife and I, like I said, we're, she's, I'd come home every day and think that she's going to put up a sale sign on the house in Chumsford. She works up at Lowell General, she's ready to retire tomorrow and looking to get down here to Plymouth. And I think it would be an excellent fit for me. It's that tweener between the city and the town. So, thank you very much for having me and, you know, yeah, if you feel, feel free to call me. That's my phone. We receive the 911 text all night long in the city of Lowell. So, you know, a phone call here or there really doesn't bother me. I think my wife liked the 911 text, you know, more than I did, actually. What's going on? What's going on?
Thank you very much.
All set, all right, thank you. I don't know.
Thank you so much.
Shake hands in this day and age, it's so difficult, you know? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Are you comfortable or?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So how are we doing with time?
Not bad, 7:20. So we're about, you know, overall about five minutes behind.
We made up two in the race.
Wait just one minute. Oh, yeah? Oh, are you ready for the next?
Yeah, I am.
Yes, we are, thank you.
And to see someone be up close and personal.
A pleasure to meet you in person.
Pleasure, absolute pleasure.
I hope you had a chance to read through, there's a letter out front. I just wanted to give you, everybody, sort of an opportunity to see what the game plan was and to, you know, understand what the rules were. So, you know, we'll be starting right away, but thank you very much for, considering Stoughton as a place you'd be interested in working and very much a pleasure to meet you. Mr. McCrisky, actually, I should start with, so the rules were, you have five minutes to introduce yourself and any sort of opening statement you might have, so.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for including me in this process. And one of the things that I hope that in the short time that we have together, face to face, that I'll give you an opportunity to see a glimpse of who Yvonne Spicer is, what she brings to the table and what she's consistently done throughout her professional career. And one of the things that I look at is what, what makes me want to do this. And this is about service. It's about being able to raise the bar for a community. And I'm happy to say every step in my professional career, no matter where I've been, I've raised the bar and changed, made a significant change in that community. And that's what I'm hoping to do in Stoughton and that's why it's so appealing to me to be considered for this role. What do I bring to the table? I bring fairness, equity, inclusion, transparency. What I bring with skills? I have a background in STEM, which is science, technology, engineering and math. I have worked in vocational education, I've worked in nonprofit and I've worked in government so, and also education. So to have a candidate that understands all of the intricacies of running a community is, I always saw that as an asset. And that was one of the reasons why I chose to run for mayor of the city of Framingham, is I felt I could bring something unique and very uniquely qualified for this because of my background. And, and I was very pleased with the work I got a chance to do in Framingham. And I'm hoping to do the same here in Stoughton. And, you know, I, I've had a chance to spend a little time in Stoughton and, you know, tasting some of your wonderful treats, whether it be a sub at Jersey Mike's or, you know, shopping at TJ Maxx here. So I've spent a little bit of time here in the community and talked with people. And, and, and one of the things that I sense is that there is a valuing of diversity in this community. It is very diverse. I was very pleased at every environment that I stepped into. I saw diversity in terms of people working in that environment. That's encouraging and exciting. And, but I also see and I've read about some of the challenges that you have in your community and that you want to address. And like everyone else, you know, we all have come through the storm of COVID and we're still standing. And some of us, you know, have learned a lot. And particularly me, as a leader in a city, I've learned a tremendous amount about myself, about my team, how I can lead a team and leading a team under fire. And, and I'm pretty proud of that work and maybe certainly can delve a little bit further into it. So as I, as I sit here with you this evening and knowing that I've done a little homework on your community, I'm sure you've done a little homework on me, and, and I'm hoping we can have a really... And and I'm hoping we can have a really wonderful dialogue with each other to look at, you know, what are those nitty gritty details that you need to still know to make a decision to inspire you to say yes to Yvonne Spicer? And yes, we we see her as our next leader in this town of Stoughton. So that's one of the things, and I still got one more time. And and I I will just leave you with one story. And and this is the story of of an experience I just had. And I had the pleasure of debating, you know, the political debates at JFK just a few days ago. And one young man said to me, he said, you know, I've always been very on the fence about political involvement and leadership. But just listening to you, you gave me hope that there's possibility. You inspired me to think very differently and gave me some ideas on what I could do differently as I think about a career going forward. And you know what? I just might consider politics and municipal government. So I said, you know, yeah, kudos, that that in itself was worth the time and energy to to be there is to inspire. And that's one of the things that I look at as a leader. I've been able to do that consistently throughout my professional careers, inspire teams to grow and to be better. And 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 that is encouraging because we're we need some inspiration right now. So so I thank you for giving me a little bit of time to glimpse into me, tell you a little bit about me. And I look forward to some of your conversations and questions. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. McCrisky, you're up.
I'm writing notes so much. It's a pleasure to meet you.
A pleasure to meet you in person.
Exactly. Well, I hope, you know, if you look at videos, you hope you don't judge by what you see on the videos. But it was great reading your resume, followed you. I'm a political nut, I've been around, you know, on this board dating back to 1992 with a couple of stints on and off. And like you, I ran when I wasn't supposed to win. So on your makeup to get elected, to, you know, to overcome what you had against you without election, kudos. Kudos. I mean, it was great to see that people do pay attention to the message that's delivered, you know, in candidates. And sometimes the old school doesn't have all the answers, you know, and it is time to move forward. I quote one of the greatest leaders I think I've ever seen is Walt Disney. And he said, it's always changing. It's always changing. If you're not open to change, you're a part of the problem, not the solution. So my question is right up front, we're trying to, and I think, you know, similar to some areas of Framingham, is that protecting our neighborhoods, the integrity of our neighborhoods, while the town is changing to people just moving in and their property is their property, but then we have dump trucks and driveways and we have businesses being construction companies being run out of backyards. That's an insult to zoning. It it does take the town down the wrong rabbit hole, yet we also need to attract development. We need to raise revenues that that value our neighborhoods and protect our residential tax rate versus, you know, setting it too high for business. So I'd really like to get your your opinion of what you've learned about the town of Stoughton, what makes you the best person that can identify these these areas? And, you know, just for presentation, I'm not looking at you to come up with a solution tonight. We can't even come up with that right now, but if you're our town manager, give me your ideas.
Well, first of all, having a chance to look at what you've done already, what what have you invested time and resources into doing plans and and, you know, working with consultants? So, you know, you're right on target, the downtown redevelopment, I think I talked about that. I mean, when I walked, drove downtown, I said, wow, this is a goldmine waiting to happen. And it's just being able to attract the right businesses to drive that traffic downtown. So and certainly looking at some of the requirements from the state of doing transit oriented development in the downtown areas, especially those of us on MBTA routes. And I shared a little bit about what we were able to do in Framingham with 900 units of brand new housing in downtown that is completely occupied. And there was question, would that happen? And so what is, if you build it, they will come and they have come. Now, the the counterpart to that is also giving them a reason to stay in the downtown. So they're not in vehicles clogging the trafficways because that's the biggest issue I always hear, you know, traffic, 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 too much traffic. So we have to create that, we have to build that buzz. And how do you do that? You you connect with those those business people and giving them incentive to come to Stoughton. You know, why do I want to be here? What is that that I want to do? And that's one of the things I think I've been very successful in Framingham. Life Sciences, we've attracted and brought in Life Sciences in Framingham to an industrial area, which is pretty, was pretty rundown and dilapidated. It is now the Mecca of Life Sciences. New York Avenue is owned by Life Sciences right now. And all, not to mention nice tax base for Framingham as well, too, adding to the tax base. It's a win win and it's really about the relationships, it's building those relationships. I can honestly say the Chamber of Commerce, I have participated in a number of events and made sure I was available to them. How do we attract new businesses, working closely with the Economic Development Director? That's a pivotal role there. And also looking at ways in which you can leverage the statewide organization. You know, I was a part of in my other life before mayor, the Mass Business Roundtable. And I still maintain those relationships. So how do I re-energize those folks to say, you know what, think about Stoughton, how do we get here? I hear you loud and clear when you're talking about the trucks and and it's in our community as well. And and one of the things I see is you have contractors, painters' trucks and everything going on in the neighborhoods and driveways, clogging up all of the parking in the public areas. And we've tried to handle that in a very delicate way with, you know, a couple of ordinances that, you know, you know, if you have a commercial vehicle, you've got to, you can't have it in the residential neighborhood. So, you know, those are the places that I think with development and growth in in a community, I see potential. I see some vacant storefronts, I see some opportunities for that to change and shift. And so I'm excited to think about some of the things I've been able to be successful at and continue that here in Stoughton.
Thank you. Mr. Jito.
Hi.
Hi.
I met you when I was on the MIPC committee and I really enjoyed chatting with you at that time. And I knew at the time that you really could communicate with just about anybody at all.
Well, thank you for that.
I I guess I'd like to ask you a very, probably a short question. But it really gets to what a town manager has to do in a town. And your experience sort of in education, in working for the museum, Science Museum, in your Department of Education work. Always sort of dealing with the educational side of things. And I guess I'm wondering how that A, set you up to be able to deal with with the operations as a mayor, which which probably you were not dealing with, you know, negotiating contracts or something like that because you had probably had a staff to do that. But how, what are the things that would allow you to do the day to day work as a as a town manager? Because there's an awful lot more roll up your sleeves things. And I'm sure that.
Well, just just so you do know, I did have to roll up my sleeves and negotiate contracts and I did. And I negotiate, I was at the negotiating table for most of our contracts, particularly police, fire, DPW. So I was at the table and especially on the more contentious ones sometimes and at every negotiating session. And the day to day operations, I think I had the benefit of, you know, of having a COO that helped in that process. But we shared those responsibilities, those team meetings, you know, and issues that we needed to deal with on a day to day basis, whether it's disciplining someone or, you know, those were the kinds of things I I did get very much involved in, the roll up your sleeves and, you know, new hires. I had to sign off on every new hire, I, you know, the purchases and so forth and, you know, and I, you know, I delegated some of that to my COO, but I did some as well. And so I have always been a very much hands on kind of leader, but also knowing when to take hands off and allow leaders to lead. And that's why you have a leadership team. But also being very much available to be an integral part of the day to day operation. And I think especially in these last four years as the first mayor of a brand new city. It was, and I and I appreciate you referencing my background in education. I use it every single day because as a teacher, as an administrator, you have to be able to move on a dime and pivot when you need to. You need to also be very resourceful of your materials and and financial resources. And these are all things that I experienced as an educator, working in the nonprofit world, you know, in the Museum of Science. I mean, it it drives on donations from the the most benevolent of of folks that wanted to support our mission. And so that was an integral part of my work as well, participating in fundraising events and making sure that we are getting the resources we need in order to continue programming and so forth and modifying as need be. So it it has been a great joy being, you know, someone that has a doctorate in leadership and to actually exercise that every day from the, you know, the boots on the ground level to the high level thinking about ways in which we can grow a community. And and so that was something that I I think I established a relationship with my leadership team that I, they knew I was there. One on one meetings, I had regular one on one meetings with everybody on the leadership team, which I thought was very, very important to establish a relationship with them that they didn't have to go through a whole echelon to get to me and have have my ear. So that was something that was really important, so.
It sounds to me like you said in in your resume that you had like 15 direct reports or something like that.
Yes, I did. Department heads. And and once again, I had a COO that helped out in that process too. But in terms of evaluating all of them, it was a combination, we would share that responsibility.
It's a big job.
It's huge. It's huge, 72,000 people. So but thank you, you're welcome.
So I know we've been over the phone, but just to refresh your memory, I'm Steve Cavey, Vice Chair of the Select Board, and very much a pleasure to see you in person.
Yes.
The question I have is about failure and and, you know, how we approach failure, how we rebound from failure. And I would just like to hear your thoughts on it, feel free to use personal examples, or just a some general idea about your your philosophy on failure.
Well, you know, coming from a technology and engineering background, engineering, you know, there's a slogan that says, fail, fail often. And fail often so you can get to the success. And that's something I strongly believe and I, one of the things that I I work hard at, is giving staff space to try new things. And to also say, you know what, it may not work, but you know what, you tried it, what did we learn from it? How do we correct it? How do we pivot? And I've done that many times in my professional career, especially starting a brand new city. And when someone would say, oh, we never did it that well, we never were a city before either. So, you know, there are some things that we're going to try, we're going to try them and let's see how well they work. And we modify as we go. One of the things that, you know, I started was the Community Government Academy. And it's an academy for residents to learn about city government, how does it work? And I, initially, we had a complicated application process. I said, you know what, let's simplify this too. That wasn't working, we weren't getting the results. And once we simplified it, we were able to get more people participating, talking about it. You saw people posting about it on social media because the goal was to engage our community more in how our government works. And that's, you know, spending time with folks in different departments. So that's an example of failure, what was failing and finding that formula for success and how to consistently do that. And and I think that's that that is how you innovate. You can't innovate without taking risk. And you have to take a risk and calculated risk. I mean, you know, risk based on facts and, you know, you're looking at different, trying to solve a problem, but you're looking at different ways to solve that problem and coming up with that best solution. But if it works, you talk about it to the community. If it doesn't work, you talk about it to the community as well. And here's what I'm going to do differently in order to try to correct it. So it's an ongoing iterative process that I I've encouraged. And and as a result of it, it gave leadership staff space to try something new and 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 make things better in our community. And I I applaud that or, you know, apply for a grant and, you know, well, we don't know if we qualify, well, let's see, let's see if we can do that. So I've been very pleased with some of the ways in which I've kind of leveraged my background and and put it to work in in the community.
Excellent, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Ms. Roberts.
Hello, Ms. Spencer. Deborah Roberts, the Chair of the Select Board, is very much a pleasure to see you again.
Yes.
My question to you is, please describe your experience in creating budgets and managing finances as well as your financial management strategies for ensuring organization sustainability. Please share an experience that illustrates your approach to capital budgeting. Stoughton's goal is to maintain its excellent credit rating while also keeping tax increases to a minimum. How would you try to do more with less?
Ooh, there's a lot in that question, an awful lot. Well, first of all, I have had a tremendous experience with budgeting because throughout my time as mayor, my CFO, she and I were glued together. And so especially over the last couple of years with the economic downturn due to COVID, how are we managing our resources? How are we making sure that, you know, our bills are getting paid? And also how are we supporting our community? Those are the kinds of things that we looked at. When we look at the budget, you know, the moment the budget is approved, it feels like you're you're starting a new budget. You're doing it, you get back at the drawing table with division heads, looking at their expenditures, looking at ways that we can economize and working with them. That's the other thing that I think was the success of of us. And and know that over the last four years, you know, we went from stabilization funds to about $5 million to over $16.5 million. And so we have built that up over the years by doing some very strategic things, thinking about our investments, our budgeting. Also, when I think about the capital budget, you know, once again, that's done in collaboration with all of the division heads. And, you know, what can we do without? What can we get another year? What can we defer? What is absolutely needs to be done? Then coming back to think about, you know, what things can be bonded? What things do we use free cash for? Those are the decision making processes that we went through. But also in a way that trying to be smart and and also efficient, for example, you know, buying new vehicles, you know. How have we invested in thinking about electric vehicles? Have we really, as we start to replace them, should we be thinking much more economically in terms of purchasing electric vehicles? That we know that municipalities can do collectively. Those are the kinds of ways I've been pushing staff. And sometimes too, thinking about ways in which there's a greater need in one department and actually investing more in that particular department for that year. For example, a couple of years ago, we needed our fire engine, we needed a new engine and it was, you know, stacked, we needed that. So we kind of shifted some resources to put it in that direction. And so now we have a, we actually took an older engine and refurbished one, so now we have a backup. And those are the kinds of creative things, working with the police department, thinking about ways in which hiring staff, because they have to go to the academy. So hiring some half year and and modulating the budget. A lot of communities, you know, I I've looked at Stoughton's budget, I went on DLS and looked at all of your information. And, you know, and yes, you have AA2 credit rating, similar to Framingham, which we do have. You know, you look at what your your value, total value, almost $5 billion, you know, Framingham is a little bit more, about $11 billion. And how and your split tax rate too. And and I know that can be a very tricky thing, making sure that, you know, there's a delicate balance between your commercial and residential. And so in looking at your tax rate, similar, very similar, Framingham is slightly higher, but very, very similar. So it's really about telling the story. It's telling the story of looking at what we're doing right now and are there things that we're doing right now that we, you know what? That doesn't really make sense anymore. We need to shift that. Is there a better way? Can technology be a source? And, you know, I I read where you had just implemented Munis, Munis. We've been using Munis for a while. And that saved a lot of time and paperwork and energy because you're making people much more accountable for putting information in using the software. So those are the kinds of things and, you know, things like, you know, payroll software, all of the ways in which we've made adjustments in order to save money and also human capital. That that's probably like any other community, your biggest investment is your human capital. And like everyone else, I also know that it it's tough trying to find workers today. I mean, we're having, everyone's having the same, everybody's looking for the same worker. So how do we still get that work done? That work still needs to get done, but how do we do it differently? What do we need to change? So that's the kind of thing, sorry. So I can get very passionate.
We're not going to cut you off soon. You'll say that, finish your answers.
I just, I just, you know, with so much packed into that question, you know, have you done it? Can you do it? And do you do it with other people? And absolutely. And do you revisit it? Capital budgeting, you know, thinking about a five year, we usually do a five year capital budget. And, you know, and planning for two and really just keep revisiting it too. Some things may fall off. I I also looked at how you creatively use your CPA money. And this is something Stoughton has done that Framingham just started, was getting, actually approving CPA. So I see some of the creative projects that you've been able to do there.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Carrera.
Hi. I'm meeting you for the first time.
Yes.
I did read your resume. I'm Scott Carrera.
Nice to meet you.
I'm a lifelong.
I'm a lifelong resident here, and a business owner in town.
Awesome.
When you saw the downtown, what do you think was the key point that was missing in the downtown?
People, people, you know, when I look at that train depot, I said, oh my goodness, I see such potential there. And, you know, whether a business, a restaurant, you know, very similar depot in Framingham. It has been restaurants, and to drive traffic there, people are getting off this train, give them a reason to stay in downtown, Stoughton. You know what, I'm gonna stop and have dinner there, you know, I'm gonna, I'm coming out of Boston, Providence, I'm just gonna stop in downtown and have dinner. People that live, I see new housing in downtown, you know, I live downtown, there should be some shopping. Do I have to drive all the way down the other side of twenty-seven to get to stop and shop? Or, you know, so how do we create those reasons for people to stay in the downtown?
The one thing that I see missing, and I've been trying to foster this, I was on the board before for nine years, and I came back after I did nine years on finance. So we did this big thing, downtown revitalization, downtown revitalization. And the only one piece, and you can tell me if this is true or false, because you see open storefronts. And we have to, because we have the train, now we have to put more apartments in, and, you know, means more cars or whatever. The one thing that I, that's gonna bring that square back is a parking garage. And the state has funds, you know, grant money for it, and I say, and I say again, you can bring anything you want, you can beg businesses to come. And we watch good people come in, put their life into a place, and they last maybe six months to a year, and then they're gone. But if we could just work on that end of it, because the depot's a nice place, but it only has six parking spaces legally for it. Then you got another lady that put her life and soul into a bar on Wyman Street, and she's already finding out that it's tough because the people that are in the apartments park in front of her place, they park on the other side. So now it's limiting her, and people don't wanna leave their nice car way over there and walk way over here. So we own a piece in the square, we use it as a rec center. That's the perfect place for the parking garage, that's what's gonna bring Stoughton back. And I can guarantee it, that's what we need. We can build whatever we want, but if you can't park, people are gonna still drive by.
You know, and I think there's a way to do this in combination, a parking garage and retail, you know, so underneath and having parking garage. You know, I think Quincy actually did some of this work. And I've seen, you know, you even start to think about, I look at Framingham, we have a parking garage that is ill-repaired, and that's been a long-going conversation. But I also think where it's located is still not as convenient to the train, you know, it really needs to be across the street from the train. But having mixed retail down below and parking above, absolutely. And I'm also trying to think about, how long will it take to pay for itself? And could that be another source of revenue for the city, for the town to be able to have, is at a park, they own a parking garage. And, you know, and so I look at some of the things that have been done in places like Newburyport and, you know, and other communities of my colleagues that I, you know, of course engage, oh, how'd you do that? And so you start to think about how do, what will it take to do it? And to create a parking garage, is that we already own the land and we own the space, if we own it, that's right there, that's half the bag.
That's half the bag, that's right.
And then figuring out how, what will be the return on the investment of to build that garage? And how long will we be able to, you know, recoup that money to actually be a profitable thing? And then what are the resources too, the redevelopment resources? You know, I particularly look at right now, the money that is floating into communities for infrastructure rebuilding. And, you know, with Chapter Ninety money, Mass Works grant, you know, and I know we were able to get a few of them for some redevelopment in Framingham.
We got one for Big Saw project.
Yeah, so, and these are the kinds of things that I think are so critically important. And that's the thinking out of the box, as I was saying, and taking a risk and saying, you know what? If we move this rec center, if we lose that, because of course, I'm sure people will be, oh no, not the rec center, we need that, we need that. So are there other alternatives that we could use, you know, for a rec center? Because, you know, similar, unfortunately, in Framingham, we don't have as many unused buildings, you know? So we don't, and especially in the downtown area, we don't have many. But, you know, it's really trying to think outside and saying, what are those things that are needed? And you're right, if people can't come to downtown, if there's no place to park, then, you know what? No, I'm gonna go down twenty-seven and shop down there, or I'm going to, you know, go to along the main drag and go to eateries there. So I understand completely, and that's one of the things that, you know, getting to the meeting of the minds on, and getting someone to say, you know what, will you go and invest, you know, the public-private partnerships? That's the other thing, that's another key to it. And, you know, a number of my colleagues who've gone on to work in other capacities, one, working at Mass Development, you know, and being able, you know, collaborate with him, you know, Dan Rivera is a good friend. And how do we attack and actually get some of those resources that we need in order to do this? And, you know, and I don't take no very easily.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Mr. Kruski.
How do you know Dan?
Oh, Dan Rivera, he was the mayor of Lawrence, you know.
Very good, very good friend.
Yeah, so when you, you know, that's one of the things that I will say, when you have colleagues that are doing the same, whether mayors or town managers or town administrators, I will tell you, over the last two years, it didn't matter, we all were in it together, and we all were working together. So from the time I became mayor, I, you know, Dan and I share a history of being native New Yorkers, so, yeah. So, and he's always been very helpful, and even when he left office to go and work at Mass Development, you know, he's like, you know, if I have anything I can do for you, I know, it's like, I know Framingham's not a gateway city, but, you know, we gateway-ish. We have gateway quality.
He had a very tough challenge up there, but he knocked it, he did a great job up there. And moving out, you know, for a better job was a better thing there, you know, with all the challenges. But he, for what he had up there, and, you know, and the problems that the city has, and they've been well televised, you know, recent, we've been subject to that as well, but that's thinking outside the box. That guy really came in and just didn't take no for an answer, so. What would he say if I called him and said, what do you think everyone?
He said, "Over."
Yeah? Thanks.
She's good people.
Oh, I can see you're good people just by your presentation. Main thing, you're smiling the whole time, I don't know how you can do that when you're here.
It's all good, you know, it's the joy in your heart here, and so, oh, wonderful.
I'm good, no, thank you.
Mr. Gito.
I guess I'm gonna ask you a hard question. Maybe it's not hard. You were talking about all the things you did in Framingham, and you saved money and provided services differently. The people must not have felt that, because you lost in the vote two to one. And I guess, I would like your assessment of that. What did you, what did you learn from that second vote? And what do you think could have turned that around?
Well, you know, I look at it this way, because I said, it's been an interesting four years.
I don't mean to, I'm not attacking you.
I know, not at all, not at all. And I don't have any issue answering this question, because one of the things that I think is really hard, we have to look at Framingham's history. And Framingham was a three-hundred-and-seventeen-year-old town. And even when they voted to become a city, they only won by a hundred-and-twelve votes. So half the people really wasn't quite sure they wanted to be a city and some wanted to be a town. So, you know, having the dubious responsibility of being the first and being the first mayor, and also not knowing, people not understanding what to anticipate, you know, how are we different from a town than a city? And one of the things that I am very, very proud of, the work I got to do, but I'm also honored to have been chosen to do the work. And I also know that when you are a glass ceiling breaker, you are, you're forging new ground where no one has ever walked before. And there's no history, there's no, you know, there's no three-hundred-and-seventeen-year history behind you to kind of propel you. And, but I also look and I can say that I moved the needle for Framingham. I put Framingham in a place that people knew this is a community that has great potential. And I raised the bar for it, and I'm pretty happy about it. And I sometimes look at, when you're in these political seats, it's like a road race. And, you know, I had the baton, and I'm passing the baton, and I hope I've laid the groundwork to continue great work in Framingham. And that's what I hope, that's where I hope that we have gone. And what did I learn? I learned change is hard, change is hard. And you know what, it doesn't happen unless you keep at it and you're tenacious about it. And so that's why, you know, it propels me to say, you know, if not Framingham, then Stoughton. I can keep moving that needle for another community, and that's what I'm hoping to do. And hopefully, maybe I can be a model for other communities, Stoughton can be the model for others to look at and say, oh, okay, that's how you do that. So it doesn't discourage me or anything, because it is part of my professional career. I have always broken ground where there has never been a path forged, being the first of many things in my life. And so I don't have any trepidation about that, I don't have any regrets. And I also look at ways that I can learn something and look and take that learning and bring it to a new level. And that's part of what I'm able to do.
What did you learn?
What did I learn that, but once again, that change is difficult, I also.
You said that, no, I understand that.
And what I, what I learned, what I learned about myself is, I am extremely resilient and tenacious. And when I think about having to lead a city during the middle of a pandemic, seventy-two thousand-person city, with a disease that we don't know anything about, and stand-up testing sites, vaccination clinics, to go from having a very high, almost ten thousand people in Framingham were infected with COVID, but to have something almost an eighty percent vaccination rate. And that's something, you know, that, those are those statistical tangibles, those are the stories, the stats and the stories that I can tell that shows the impact of the work I've been able to do. To make sure our senior population, you know, our golden citizens had food to eat and groceries and standing-up distribution programs, those are the things that I can point to to impact survival. And knowing that I can do amazing things with very little resources. And I will tell you too, staff, I didn't do this by myself, I couldn't do this by, I had the most incredible team of leaders. And some days we were working seven days a week, and no one complained, we just did what needed to be done. And so that was good.
Dr. Spicer, I have one very, this is a softball question, which is, in the letter that you had a chance to read, it does mention that if select board members wanted to follow up, they should feel comfortable contacting the candidates directly. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so in our package of information, we have a phone number and email address, so everyone has a, should feel comfortable reaching out to you with any follow-up questions. The other thing I want to mention is that for myself, I will be asking, sort of creating one additional sort of assignment. So I'll be sending a case study to each of the candidates, same one, outlining a problem that we're having. And then really what I want to see is just how you organize the problem, sort of prioritize things. I don't think there's any, personally, I'm sure there are wrong answers. I think generally, there's no, you know, wrong answers, you may all just have a different style, and that's what I'm kind of trying to see. But don't feel like you have to solve the problem as much as just lay out a plan for solving it. And so I'll be sending that probably tomorrow morning. And that is, that is, that will be my other question, and just as, you're probably well aware of meeting laws, but just so you know, that will be a public document, so.
Absolutely.
So just be mindful of that. So Chair Roberts, you're up.
Dr. Spicer, Stoughton has excellent department heads. How will you promote communication cross-functionally and within the department?
Well, one of the things, you know, when I became mayor, you know, and I pretty much inherited everyone that was a department head in me, because I didn't make any major overhaul changes to the leadership team that was there. I had to build the mayor's office, but, because there was no mayor's office, but pretty much the other leaders. And one of the things I started right off the bat was regular meetings with them, because they had not been reading as a collective leadership team. So establishing regular monthly department head meetings, division head meetings. And then also refining that with my COO, he and I came up with a system to really think about ways in which they're communicating. For example, we grouped them, we had regular meetings like the public safety, police, fire, DPW, they would have a meeting. Administration and finance folks, they would meet together, and that would include HR. So we grouped them and we, what we called it, Frame-Stack. And she asked a meeting, you know, every other week, and updating, what's happening in your department, how's your staffing? What's happening with your budget, are you spending your budget out? And really, that was a way in which other divisions got a chance to hear what's happening for other people, and ways in which they can work together, because they do work very closely together, those different departments. And I encourage them not only to meet outside of those meetings and work on projects, which they did. And oftentimes, you would find particularly fire and police work very closely together, and sometimes, you know, DPW and police. And making sure that they also knew they had a line of communication directly to me and did not have to go through the COO to talk to me or anything. And that was, that was something that goes back to my one-on-one meetings with them, and that I would schedule periodically. Typically, like Fridays, I, you know, I used to like to have those meetings on Fridays. And I would schedule, you know, to have a half-an-hour meeting, check-in, and sometimes, and then once in a while, it got to a point where it was like fifteen minutes or something. But they could bring a problem to me, or they could share an idea that they're thinking about. And as I said earlier, giving them space to keep growing their department. And I'd say the one department head that I met with more regularly was the COO and the CFO. I met with her more often, probably like three, three times a week. So that's the kind of thing too, is because we were just kind of keeping tabs on our finances. Communication is both ways, and it's not just because I'm the leader that it's only coming from me. I want to hear from them because it informs my decision-making. I also want them to push back on me sometimes, because that's the other thing too, it's the notion of you have to have all the answers. And I want to hear their thinking about, you know, ideas that I might have. And that's been, that's been a very successful formula for me. And, you know, to, first of all, it creates an atmosphere of collaboration and collegiality that transcends, you know, you're their leader, so none of us really have an opinion, and we just go along with whatever you say. And that's, that's clearly not, I'm very much a collaborative leader and want to hear. But I also, with that being said too, you know, and when I've had to deal with challenges and sometimes with leaders, you know, I've had to have that one-on-one conversation, and sometimes it's a difficult conversation that requires corrective action. And I have no problem doing that also, so. And it's a give and take in realizing that it may be a corrective action, and once that's corrected, you know, I acknowledge that and say, you know, what, we move on here, you know, and we don't need to revisit that again, we can keep moving on too. So that's, that's the other thing too, is like, no, no, we're not gonna be ostracized or, you know, feeling left out of the mix. But I always have led with the belief that there is always more than one leader in the room. And to, my, one of my ultimate goals is to inspire others to greater leadership. And I'm happy to say I've been able to do that over the course of my professional career. So I'll probably keep doing that, it works, thank you for your question.
You're welcome. How am I doing about twenty-three seconds?
Mr. Carrera, are you, sorry, are you done?
Yeah, I was just, if I had some other time, I just wanted to.
You can, you can have my time if you need it, because she answered a question that I, that I was gonna ask. So if you need my time to answer something, you can have it.
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Carrera. No, I was just gonna use my time so you could ask us questions, if you have any questions of us.
I do, you know, and one of the things that I looked at, and I've listened to, you know, a couple of you during my first interview. But I also, and I, you know, when you read the profile, you get a sense of what skill sets, and that's very clear. But I also want to know from you, as my bosses, what will success look like to you in thirty, sixty, ninety days? What will that look like to you for me? If I'm hired in this job, what will it look like?
So I'll take a swing at the pitch, it's a very difficult question. But no, it's a thoughtful question. What I would like to see is, you know, much with, I'm sure you've experienced in other towns, is that our town does have a tendency of becoming sort of tribal in, within Town Hall and within. in, within Town Hall, and within our, the way that we operate within our own government as well. And to the extent that we don't buy into that sort of, that impulse, we tend to be very successful. It's when we start to get, as I said, tribal, where it's us and them, and we're going to, I'd rather shoot my own foot off than see you succeed, sort of attitude. That's where we start to really see a lot of decay, destruction of our ability to function as government. So in the thirty, sixty, ninety days, to be honest, is being able to sort of sense that, the feeling that, that, yeah, yeah, this is, we can do this. There's no reason for me to, you know, take the knives out. We'll work together. And when I talk to Dr. Spicer, I feel like she listens to me. I feel like, you know, there's, there's, that, you know, when I start to get feedback, that they bring a problem to you, and you respect, you know, where they're coming from, and you're actively helping them. That's ultimately, all I ask really anybody, is an effort to treat everybody with respect. And even if they're coming in sort of hot, hear them out and try to make life better. You know, I think that part of getting involved in government is trying to make the lives of your neighbors better. And not, it should, I feel like it shouldn't be all about me, or just all about you, or so. So what I would like to be able to do is go into Town Hall and just feel that ease. When I talk to people, there's, you know, there's no drama, or very little, and they felt like they could reach out to you without any problems. And same with constituents, people in the town. We've seen that, I've seen that with other town managers. And I've also seen the opposite with other town managers, where they felt like they, there was us and them, and they weren't part of us. They felt like I couldn't talk, I can't talk to that town manager, they won't, they won't take my calls. So that's my answer. I'll pass it along to other members.
I agree. I might put a different timeframe on the, how long it takes to do that. But that's very important. We need to develop a budget. We need to develop a long-term capital plan. And that has to be done soon. That is in the thirty, sixty, ninety degree, ninety-day time period. And that's got to be done. So if we don't do that, then we have a big problem.
Scott, did you have to add?
I think she has the experience to realize where she should be. And I'm in a spot where we set things, policies, for her to follow, if, you know, if it was need. But I'm probably a bad example of somebody who, because I'm a boss in the private sector, and I know what I want. And it's unfortunate that, I don't like the word team. I'm going to tell you that right now. I wrote it down. I'm not a big person on the team, because it's a finite group of people. It doesn't involve everybody. But I like how you say, I like to meet with this department and this one, instead of having the big melee, and nothing really gets done. I think you'd have to meet with, you know, each department, see where they're at. Then you can bring in, if there's something ongoing over in Steve's department, he might need a little more attention from you. Lou's all set, he's rolling along. But to bring them all in and just have them sitting there like this, and then, you know what I mean? I don't think it's needed, but you'll know that. But I, I'm a, I don't believe in rewarding people, because we finally got job descriptions that I've been screaming about. And if I'm chosen to work for you, I don't think it's right that if you ask me to do something that's well within my experience, to ask for a stipend. I'm not a big guy on that. I don't think it's warranted if it's, if you're the boss, and Deborah's going to jump in, I'm going to jump in, and you might need Lou's expertise. It's all for the good. But the stipending is, it really bothers me. It doesn't, it just, it causes problems, like what Steve was talking about. It becomes the tribal entities, because we all like to use the word team. And there's department head, staff, and a town manager. It's not a team. They're all hired for specialty skills. You've got a guy who's a town engineer, you've got a guy who's a fire chief. Do your jobs. It's a very simple line to follow.
Understood. Understood.
That's, I hope I wasn't rude.
No, not at all. Not at all. Mr. Kruski, did you have something to share?
Just a comment. Again, my hat's off. You know, you came in, you ran against the old guard. You weren't expected to win, and you didn't. You broke the ceiling. Congratulations. That's something to be very proud of.
And from my perspective, exactly what you've been describing all along, to be collaborative. You said you have experience developing a multi-year, you actually said a five-year capital project plan. We've been talking about this for some time. Being, being an innovator, being inspiring, yeah. So I liked your choice of words. And if you were hired, if you were the choice to fill that role, I would expect that you would deliver on what you're saying here today.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I have a long pride of myself on, you know, I will do what I say I'm going to do, and do it well to the best of my ability. You know, and once again, I do thank you for that, because I, you know, it gave me a bit of insight, too. And, yeah, we need to step it up. Budget time is coming, and it's due. It's going to be due end of January here. And so those are the kinds of things that, you know, I'm sure staff know there, what needs to get done, and they've been working. I will say, I would certainly, the interim town manager would want to pick his brain in what he's been in, because I know he's done this role a couple of times. And, you know, and he brings probably a wealth of knowledge about the community and being able to collaborate with him.
That'd be a very good second for you.
Yeah, and so just being able, you know, and I hear you loud and clear as well, too. And as I mentioned, too, during COVID, and, you know, people worked very hard, and sometimes seven days a week, and not once did I hear, I need a stipend. Yeah, so. So I'm grateful in that sense that we all rolled our sleeves up and did what we needed to do in order to be, but I also, in the same vein, you know, want people to be fairly compensated, you know, for their work and their effort, too. So I, you know, it's, it all boils down to one thing that I value very much, and it's relationships. It's really being able to establish that kind of give-and-take relationship that people know you're there for them, but you're also, and they're there to serve the greater community of Stoughton. And that's, that's what we do. That's what we do. That's our business in municipal government, is to serve the people. How are we serving them? And are we, are our efforts matching what we say we value in this community? And if not, then we need to be making adjustments. And do them respectfully, as I, you know, as I agree wholeheartedly, and consistently. That is critically important to do that. You know, and that's, you know, I think that one of the other questions you had asked me at one point, you know, what would people say? I love your question. What would people say about you? And I, I'm very pleased to say, you know, whether someone was a subordinate or a colleague that I've worked with, you know, at municipal levels, and different colleagues that work in other communities, they all get a glimpse of my work ethic and my work values. And that they can count on me. And so that's, that's the other thing, too, is being dependable and making sure that you're leading by conviction and leading by example, but also making sure that you're giving space for people to grow. That's, that's another part of, I think, you know, sometimes in municipal government, we don't always think about, that person needs to feel that their job is meaningful, and they're getting fulfilled as well. So, so those are my strong suits, definitely. Thanks.
Well, I, before we move on, I know you did relinquish your time, but you feel like you.
I'm good, yes, absolutely.
In that case, Dr. Spicer, I know you've already spoken, but I do want to offer you the chance to make any sort of closing statements you would like. And originally, the idea was you could ask any questions you want, but you've already asked us, you can ask us more questions, by all means.
Yes.
But certainly, you have five minutes to, that's yours.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for giving me this time this evening to meet you all in person, to have a dialogue with you. And I think even during our time together, you know, asking those difficult questions, but also asking those real critical questions. Is this woman forced to, is this woman going to be able to do the job? And yes, I can do this job, and I can do it very well. I'm proud of my track record in doing this in a larger community. And sometimes you learn to pivot on different situations. But at the end of the day, knowing that I have the capacity to not only hold the reins here in Stoughton, but drive this train forward and grow this community in a way that you see fit for it to grow. And do that with integrity, do it with honor, and certainly a strong conviction, and being able to bring in those resources that we need in this community in order to make it happen. I will once again reiterate to you, Stoughton appeals greatly to me because of what I've seen as I've driven through this community, as I've spent time, you know, walking through the stores and talking with people in the community. This is a community that cares about each other. It's a community that values all of its people, and it's rich diversity, whether you're talking your Brazilian restaurants that I passed, and smelling good stuff coming from them. And, you know, and making sure that young people are engaged, too. Every time I go into a store, I see young people working and having a part-time job. And I said, that is building credibility. So once again, you know, being here in Stoughton is not just a position for me. It's an investment. It's an investment of my time. It's an investment into this community. And it's, hopefully, I'm making a valuable investment for the greater Stoughton community. And that's what I hope to bring to this job. I've learned a lot in over thirty years of leadership experience. And I've been fortunate to do a lot of different things. And I think it adds to my repertoire of talent, of skill sets, of ability to navigate, you know, whether I'm talking to someone that is sweeping the floor, or somebody that is in the C-suite of a major corporation. I can do both, and I can navigate in all of those different worlds. I also have the capacity to make everyone feel like they belong at the table. There's a seat at the table for them, too. And whether the angry resident that's mad that his trash didn't get picked up, to the person that is really lauding something that has been done in the community. And so that's where you come to look at this, is not just a management kind of position, but really a leadership kind of position. A leadership that is working closely with my partners. All five of you are my partners in this work. And also looking to think that, as you give direction, we can have a dialogue, an ebb and flow. And here's why I think this is a good idea, and here's why I think if we did it this way, would you be amenable. It's important to me to make sure that lines of communication are always open. Even though I'm managing the day-to-day, it's important that you know and that you're never blindsided by anything that is happening also. Even as mayor, I had regular meetings with the chair and vice chair of the council. And I'm happy to do that with the whole select board. So, you know, that, that's one of the things, too, that making sure that we're all on the same page. And, you know, I love this analogy, when you think about, you're in a boat, and you row in a boat, and that the oars are going in the same direction. Because if one oar is going forward, the other one's going back, with the boats going around in circles. And I want this ship and this boat to keep moving forward. So, you know, that's where, and that comes only if we're all talking to each other, we're conveying to the, the, oh my goodness, I was one of these, too, you know, town meeting members. We're having that kind of conversation in the different committees that are established. All of that comes into play. And, you know, and I, I see it as an opportunity to keep doing the good work that I love doing, and that's being of service. So I want to thank you for yet this opportunity, and I look forward to some favorable outcome. And certainly, if you have more questions, I'm more than happy to answer them for you.
Thank you so much. Such a pleasure.
Thank you. Absolute pleasure. Absolute pleasure.
Good things are happening in this building. It's nice construction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Spicer, Kayvi, how we're doing with time?
It's eight twenty-two. So we are only a couple of minutes behind schedule, so I think that's a win.
We're gaining, Ken. We keep going. We're right.
Right direction. So you ready for the next candidate, or take two minutes?
Let's take two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes, okay.
Can we?
Two minutes.
Yeah, of course. Great seeing you again, Mr. Beeter.
Absolutely.
So we, before we get started, I hope we had a chance to read through a little letter that you kind of went through the ground rules before tonight, just to make sure that everyone is more or less aware of the process, and that it's also consistent with everybody. Just want to make sure you had a chance to see that.
I did, yes.
Great. So we can just get started. Let's start by saying that I'd like to personally thank you for taking the opportunity to apply for this position to serve potentially as the town manager of the town of Stoughton, and to consider Stoughton as a place you would want to work. And so thank you very much for considering us. You have five minutes to, for opening statements, and then we'll get the ball rolling. Thank you very much.
Sure. Do you want this on?
It's on.
It's on already? Okay.
All by itself.
Again, thank you very much. My name is Jonathan Beeter, and I just wanted to start by saying it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for the opportunity. So Madam Chair, members of the board, you have a copy of my resume. And I live in the town of Stoughton. I live on two hundred and Highland Street. I went through Stoughton schools, graduated in nineteen ninety. I went to Wentworth Institute of Technology. I received a Bachelor's of Science in Construction Management. From there, I worked for Fleet Bank, and then Mon Continental, and then I wound up working for the town of Stoughton in ninety-seven. I held, I think, every position in the Stoughton Engineering Department, junior engineer, senior engineer, assistant town engineer. I was acting town engineer for a while, for several years. Then I went over to DPW, and I became the operations superintendent, assistant superintendent. So I was there for a couple of years before I went to the town of Plymouth. And I went there in March of twenty-eleven, and I am still there today as the Director of Public Works. And the DPW in Plymouth is a fairly large organization, if you would. We have thirteen different divisions. What's unique about the Plymouth DPW is not just the size and complexity of the town, but just the workforce, and there are responsibilities. We have a cemetery, crematory, highway division, water sewer. I have an engineering staff of five, so it's a fairly complex. We have about a hundred and thirty employees, budget of approximately twenty million. Water is enterprise, sewer is enterprise. We're in discussion now actually to take over the airport as well. We do have an airport. So it's been a very interesting job. I really enjoy municipal work. It's really one of my favorite things to do. I have a passion for the start to finish. I have a lot of experience with town meeting. The structure in Plymouth is very similar to Stoughton, where it's a five-member board. It's a strong TM. We have two town meetings a year. The spring town meeting is more of the budget capital requests, and the fall is more housekeeping. So if there's any emergency unforeseen capital request, we'll go to a fall town meeting. Spring is generally the bigger lift, if you would. We're already building budgets now, our capital, our budgets, and we actually have to do a little bit different in terms of introduction, in terms of each of our divisions. That's all due next week. So it's pretty busy. It's been great. Some of the bigger projects I've done in Plymouth, you see in my resume and my cover letter, is we really redid the trash program, a lot of sewer projects, road paving, really a lot of maintenance on the cemetery side, parks and forestry. We do a lot with water and sewer work, a lot of open space, a lot of planning and development work with zoning in the planning boards, direct communication, constant involvement with the town manager's office in terms of financial planning, the budget process, and how we really move our capital. The difficult thing in Plymouth has been really advancing all our capital projects, because DPW competes with itself. But again, I'm a resident of Stoughton. I have been for a long time. I have three boys. My wife is the nurse at the high school. It's a passion of mine. I'm looking to kind of take that next step, that next chapter in my life. I have a strong desire to do it. I have a wealth of experience, a lot of firsthand knowledge of this town. I still live in this town. I'm very familiar with a lot of the projects you have going on now and up and coming. And I think I would be a tremendous asset to you. I would like to give back to this town. I've lived here for a long time. My three boys are still here. My youngest is a senior this year. And I think it would be a great team. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll start off with Mr. Giel. So we'll start off with Mr. Giel.
I want to start out by saying you have a very good friend in Charles Madison. He's a reporter in your area, as you well know, and a town meeting representative. Well, I called him because I wanted to find out about you and some other people in that area. And he told me not to select you because you're too valuable to Plymouth. And he told me he'd tell you that, and you chuckle.
He did tell me. I've known Charles for a long time.
Right. So I know a lot more about you than the other candidates because of your work in town and because I would drop into the engineering department probably more often than I should have. And you're in your wife's friendship with my daughter. So my questions of you might not be the same as I might ask other people. And you haven't managed a town, but you've managed a large department in a large, large town. I mean, it's about eight times the size of Stoughton. It's twice the population at least, I think.
It is.
And, you know, so it's, you're not, it's not that you don't know how to manage, that's for sure. But size isn't the only thing. There are a whole lot of other relationships that need to be considered when you move from one kind of job to another. And I sent an email to all of the town meeting representatives, asking them what the characteristics and skills of a new town manager would be. And I think one of the top things was they wanted a person with town manager experience. So I'm wondering, how's your work experience allowed you to be chosen as sort of a first-time town manager in a community that may want to have somebody with a lot of experience? And I guess another sort of a drawback on your being a town manager in the town that you live in is what, I don't mean that you necessarily, this is going to happen, but, you know, people would just say, oh, I know him, and he knows somebody or another, and the decision that he made is, you know, there's something behind that. And so how do you deal with all of that? Because that's real.
It's a great first question. It's a perfect intro for this evening.
I hated to ask it, but at the same time, it's something that needs to be asked.
Yes. So as far as how can you take a DPW director in the town of Plymouth and take that person who's me into the manager's role in Stoughton? There's a number of areas I can go into, but first and foremost, I'll say Plymouth is unique. Plymouth is extremely unique. So Stoughton has really provided me with a solid base. Solid base. I had great teachers, tremendous experience. And I went to Plymouth and really, you know, I was young when I went to Plymouth, and it's been such a great experience and what I've learned. Very strong union environment. The projects are unbelievably complex. Very strong finance committee, Board of Selectmen in terms of the outreach that is necessary to get your projects to go. I've done well over $200 million of capital. They have a very strong delegation. The reps, Terry Murray, Senator Vinnie DiMascio, just the whole legislative process has been wonderful. Working with Mass DOT and DEP. And it's very unlike a typical DPW director in the Commonwealth. I don't think there's any DPW director in this state that has done nearly the amount of work, the volume of work, and the type of projects. We have thirty-seven miles of coast, three hundred and sixty-five ponds, four hundred miles of road, and again, a hundred and thirty staff, three different unions. So every day, it was different. It was never the same, and we just didn't do maintenance. We do construction. We do major projects. And those projects aren't just typical, you know, you need a conservation commission approval. These projects require MEPA, CZM, Divisionary and Fisheries. We went through Article ninety-seven processes because of state-owned property, where I had to go into the State House and testify. Very unusual for a DPW director. So I think that volume and the technical part of it, bringing things through town meeting, setting water sewer solid waste rates, something I've done multiple times, working, you know, getting involved with the charter in terms of the roles and responsibility, shutting off water development, land development. Plymouth is, has been, and continues to be the fastest-growing town in the Commonwealth. Very unusual for a DPW director to be dealing with those types of projects. Multiple apartment projects, fortyBs, multiple hotels, big projects, which is unusual. Having to provide services and sustain those services since of limitation is definitely unique. We have a wastewater treatment plant. I oversee the contract, the operation and maintenance agreement, so we contract that out. That's a little bit different. Again, like I said, we have an airport, we have a hospital, multiple healthcare facilities. So it's always different. And that's one of the reasons why I've been there for quite some time, because it has never been stagnant. The people there are wonderful. I've been able to earn the respect of town meeting. But what I learned early on was it's about outreach. It's about being proactive. It's about getting ahead of these projects to earn the respect of town meeting and to know that people understand the job you do and how you do it. But to really sum it up, to go from the DPW director in Plymouth to the town manager in Stoughton, I have no reservations. I don't have any fears. I'm not nervous. I know I would do a good job. These are my neighbors. It would be extremely important to me to be successful in this role. I wouldn't even be applying for this job if I didn't think I could do it. You also use the word drawback as far as being the town manager in the town I live in. That's been a conversation that a lot of towns have in terms of residency requirements and living in town, leaving at the end of the day, coming back. I look at being the town manager as far more than a job. It would be a lifestyle for me. It's a twenty-four-seven job. As DPW director, one of my things that I think that have really pushed me ahead of most is my access, my involvement. And it would be far easier in Stoughton. I'm here, my wife's here, my kids are still here, and my interaction, my community involvement would be off the charts, if you would, just because of my ability to work with people, my personality. I enjoy, you know, getting down and dirty with folks on projects. So I don't see my residency here as a drawback. I look at it the exact opposite. My history, my knowledge of the town, the people that I know, I think it's an incredible opportunity. A lot of the consultants that the town uses on the projects, MAPC, OCPC, you know, people in the state, DEP, Mass DOT, I have a lot of extremely strong contacts that I think would be a benefit as opposed to a drawback. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krera.
I don't have to tell him, boy, yeah. You sort of touched on it. Describe when you, if you get the job and you get appointed, what your leadership skill will be in style when you come in, how you would approach setting up your town halls there.
So my leadership style is definitely, I follow a chain of command. I think that's important to have lines, but I'm definitely team-oriented. I think there's wonderful things you can do when you have a team that works cooperatively and together, and they have each other's backs, they understand what the goal and objectives are of the town. And I've seen that happen, and it's a great thing. It really is. You can do anything when you put your mind to it and you work together cooperatively. So I think in terms of my leadership style is to bring people together at the table, understand what the task is at hand, and move forward in a positive, unified direction. I do not micromanage. I like to delegate, and sometimes one of my downfalls, I put a lot of trust in people. But I do put trust in people. I do enjoy delegating and see what people can do. I like to motivate. I like to see people accomplish their goals. I like to see people grow. One of, you know, one of the things I'm most proud of implementing is some of my own staff that have been able to progress through the ranks, from DPW employees to superintendents or division heads, to the procurement officer in town, to those senior-level positions that we have worked cooperatively together for a number of years. But it would take some time to get to know staff, some of the staff. I know a few of them now. But it would be a mutual understanding of working together to really move the whole team forward. So I definitely like the whole-team approach. And my background has really been seeing different things over the years and taking bits and pieces and implementing them. It was very, very interesting. It's when I left Stoughton and went to Plymouth, oh, you know, I thought I could do this, or I thought I could do that, but it's not always the case. And, you know, Stoughton has changed. I've changed. And there's different people in town. And you can't do things like we did in the nineties or the early two thousands. It's a different world. Contractors are different. Construction's different. After COVID, I think the entire workforce is different. You know, working from home, telecommuting, difference in hours, you know, personalities. All of those things, I think, come into play when you talk about leadership. But I like to motivate people. I do. I like to show people that I can do pretty much everything. That's another reason why I applied for the job. I'm very comfortable in all of the different departments in town. I mean, I've been doing it for quite some time now, whether it be building, assessors, engineering, DPW, fire, police. They're all relative to my experiences over the past twenty-five years.
Anything further? Perfect. So I'm up next. We have met a couple of times over, we met once during the last interview during the session, and we've met once before when you interviewed the last time for the town manager position. And as always, it is definitely a pleasure to see you again. I'm glad that you've come back again and applied for this role. The question I have is about failure, about, you know, the experience of failure, the processing of it, how we rebound. Feel free to use, you know, personal examples of this, but what I really want more is to see your philosophy on failure and how we come back from it.
Another great question, Stephen. We cannot realize success without failure in life. I think we have all been there and done that, and it makes us stronger as individuals. I read a great thing online about Michael Jordan the other day about failure and success. Missing ninety thousand baskets over the course of his career, and not making championships, and just going through life. It's a good thing. It really is. You need to be able to pick yourself up and move on. And I'm not gonna, I don't think it's relevant to go into little projects, but for me personally, I think a great example is me being back here again today. That's a great example of how one can be successful. And I don't have a concern about not getting the job. You know, I'm very interested in the job. I would love to have the opportunity to the job, but it will not be a problem if I don't have the job, if I don't get the job. Successes are also looked at differently from everybody. What I see success, you may not. For me, success is, yes, getting, going through town meeting and getting a vote, a strong vote, for a project you put a lot of time into. That's a great success story. Seeing an employee accomplish their tasks, coming into work with a smile on the face, that's a success. Going home every day, you know, watching my family grow, those are successes. You bring all those together, it's the roof over your head. It's the hierarchy. You know, it's Maslow's hierarchy. That's what we all, you know, strive for, which is great. But for me, I've been very successful, and I am extremely fortunate for that. I think it's who I surround myself with in life. I think it's my work ethic. It's my integrity. It's how I conduct business day-to-day. It's putting the time in to accomplish what you need to, to witness those successes, Stephen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Cheer up.
Mr. Beeter.
Yes.
It's very much a pleasure to see you again.
Thank you.
My question is, describe the approach you would take to address the desires of members of the community. To keep it like it is, as well as those in the community who want to see some new ideas, innovating businesses, which may change the nature of the community, but expand the tax base. What steps would you take to address all needs effectively and in the best interest of the town?
There's multiple steps to answer your question, in terms of to do that. And that's involvement. That's community involvement, outreach. It's not just the day-to-day operations of the town and the departments within. It's the FaceTime. It's getting out at night. It's getting out on the weekends, meeting the people. You know, again, you know, I'm up there now, coaching sports. I've coached STOIC, Little League, flag football, all of these things that I've done. And that's where you hear it. That's where you see it. You witness it firsthand. You get the feedback. You create the dialogue. People know who you are, and you understand the issues. I was at the library preparing for this, and I was at the Diversity and Inclusion. I stopped in to see them. It's like, just by listening for five minutes, it's worth its weight in gold as far as what people want to do in terms of asking questions, trying to understand how the town operates, what the goals of the select board are in terms of budgets. You mentioned taxes, you know, are we looking conservatively? How are their taxes going to be impacted when you go to the Council on Aging, when you're at the library, when I'm at a high school football game? All of those things, that's where it's at, and that's one of the things I'm most interested in, because I'm doing it now. It would be very easy for me to do. And I would love to take that to the next level and having that dialogue with the residents. And again, I don't see that as a negative or as a drawback because I live in town and I know a lot of people. I only see that as a positive, me being in Stoughton, out and about, and bringing that information back to this board. I only see that as a powerful thing in terms of what we can do with that. I think that's the way it's supposed to be. I think that's what a town like Stoughton should be. I think that there's so many things we can do to improve different facets, different areas, whether it be the Veterans Day Parade, whether it be July Fourth, whether it be Halloween, touch a truck, anything we do to bring the residents in, old, young, whatever that makeup may be. If I was town manager, that would be an automatic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McCrisky.
Here's a simple one. How has your experience positioned you to attract new growth and address protecting neighborhoods in the area that you see what I see? Parking in the streets, parking on lawns, commercial vehicles in driveways or on lawns in the residential areas. In some ways, I've said in the past that it's like we're under assault, you know, to maintain the integrity of the town that you and I grew up in. I've got you by a few years, but I'm seeing things that I could never connect with Lou on when I was first elected, because I was saying, oh, change is coming. You've got to welcome change. You've got to work with it. But what I recognize in that, and this is a question really is geared to you because you're a Stoughton guy, is that now, in my older age, I can understand what Lou was trying to get across to me at that younger age that I could not connect to because of the lack of the experience. You haven't lived through it. You're seeing what I'm seeing. I'm doing my part, is sitting on this board, trying to dictate policies, you know, work with people to make a difference, to protect our town, to get all what we all talk about over the years. So how has you, what can we expect you to perform as a town manager to attract new growth, bring in business, and then yet, protect our neighborhoods? So that's, I'm really curious to hear your answer to this, because I know you see what we see.
Absolutely. And a lot has changed. Every town is changing, and, you know, the influx and the development has added a burden everywhere. And a lot of that can be addressed through planning and zoning, proper planning and zoning, and policy. And those are the things you need to monitor and watch in terms of how you regulate, you know, development. FortyBs are tough law, you know, every town and community in the Commonwealth has experienced that, and, you know, we deal with it in terms of mitigation or whatever you can do to address impact on services. But I do think, you know, to slow it down or to control it really falls in, you know, planning board, zoning board, and what we can do as a town to make sure we have proper regulations and procedures in place to control that. As far as... As far as attracting new growth, Joe, it's about marketing the town, it's about working with those stakeholders, whether it be North Stoughton or on 138 Corridor, in terms of what can we do through social media, the town's website, through this board in terms of policy to show and sell what this town has. I know this town has some very solid infrastructure in terms of water and sewer, that's a plus. We have great access to Route 24, which is a solid plus. Again, there's not much land left, but I think you're going to see redevelopment of land over time, and to see what matches with zoning. And your tax rate, you have a split tax rate, which is a plus. A lot of towns don't have that. I think it's 14 on the residential and maybe 22 on the commercial industrial side. So you have to make sure you're looking at that too, because you have to make sure that's affordable. One thing that's been great about Plymouth is some of the 40R, the TIF agreements, the district financing, those are some great options to attract business. We're looking at biotech in Plymouth. We're looking at trying to get more of that commercial investment as opposed to just some of the box retail, to keep it and to kind of make sure you have people attracted. The downtown is one, talking about new growth, kind of transforming that. So I think there's a lot of things you can do there. As far as parking and impact on neighborhoods, we have a traffic safety task force in Plymouth that we utilize frequently for those issues. That is something that I would do as town manager, to have meetings with this board, bring issues up to the forefront, and really kind of create a working group, whether it be the police and fire chiefs, the DPW superintendent, a member of the selectmen, to look at certain areas as far as, okay, what's the problem and how do we address it? We have significant issues in Plymouth, White Horse Beach, Morton Park, Fresh Pond, where we see those type of issues, especially the past couple of years, where you have a lot of people coming in, you know, littering, parking problems, and there's a way to address it. It's just you have to look at the pros and cons of what you do in terms of parking enforcement, towing, signage, so, you know, one-way streets. There's all sorts of avenues you can go down. It's just a question of putting the people that are involved at the table, getting them together to figure out what works and what doesn't work, and then kind of implementing that.
All right. And I'd like to try and just narrow that just a little bit.
Sure.
In my world, what my job consists of is going to companies and saying, hey, listen, you've got issues, you know, in an area, and I know what those issues are, and you know what my work is.
Yep.
So I go into real high-profile companies that have a horrible safety record, insurance premiums that are through the roof, and I go in and say, you're paying 22% more in insurance than an average fleet size, your safety scores are at risk of you having an audit, which would result in roughly a $50,000 fine in this area, blah, blah, blah. I can fix that for you. I know how to implement the policy and it's going to do it. So that's kind of what I'm looking for, because you drive the streets every day, you must have the same thoughts, like, son of a B, if I could do that, I would do that in 20 minutes. What would you say, I'm ready for this challenge, and I know what to do? I mean, as the town manager.
Yeah, as the town manager, if there's a particular business, that would be a pretty simple conversation as far as meeting with that business owner or whoever's involved with that organization, as far as addressing a concern, as far as what the impact, negative or positive, is on the town, to understand it, to bring it to the forefront and massage or manipulate it so it works. So there's a lot of businesses in Stoughton that have impacts on the streets, whether it be traffic or damage from trucking or construction. And it's, as town manager, I would have no reservation about meeting with anybody to have a discussion as far as what we can do to make improvements. I do that now as DPW director. Again, one of the things that's unique about Plymouth, outreach, getting ahead of these issues. So if this select, if this select board, you know, during one of the meetings say, hey, listen, JB, we're having an issue on Park Street with one of the businesses and their employees parking on the street, or their trash is in the road, or their employees are hanging out at night, how would you like to handle that? If that's what you, is that where you, is that the question?
No, no, no. I was looking more for, I'm the town manager, I'm going to solve this problem, this is how I'm going to solve it. What do you see? I could sit here and name off 100 things of what I see in this community that's wrong, and how we're not getting in front of it, and it's festering and growing. So you start, tell me, pick an area and say, as town manager, I'll change this by.
Sure, sure. So as town manager, some of your bigger projects, let's talk about school on Canton Street, as far as road design, working with Greeman Peterson, working with Mass DOT as far as, you know, safe streets, as far as roundabouts. I, as town manager, would go to Boston and meet with them and talk about design concepts as far as trying to save taxpayer money relative to not paying for design. Working with Mr. Tisdale on the tip projects for those type of things. 139, the reconstruction of 139, I would be at District 5 tomorrow, having a conversation with them as far as, what are their plans, when are they going to fix it, what can the town expect for mitigation and traffic impacts? Those are some of the things that I would do immediately. Some of the quieter things, train station, Stoughton Center, you know, getting up to speed with all the stakeholders, working with this board and giving you feedback in terms of what I can do. I am not shy. I am quite persistent and resilient. I don't think there's an issue in this town that I would be, you know, nervous to tackle, Joe. But I work above board, I'm transparent, I'm accountable. As I said, I work with a variety of agencies, DOT, DEP. I was just watching Mark and Phil talk about PFFAS at Mary Pond. PFFAS, the state is going to keep on adding levels of PFFAS testing. I'd be at DEP with both of those employees, as far as having conversations, as far as, okay, it's going to take us two years to construct. We may want to pause a little bit, because as the testing increases, there may be more parameters to work out, and we don't want to start wasting taxpayer money. So I don't have an issue as far as getting, you know, into some of the key issues as soon as I see them. And again, it's a cooperative effort. You all see things differently. Me, as a resident of town, as a DPW director, I pick up on things. Potholes, trees, signage, striping, all of those things, which I think is a benefit to know, especially when it comes to winter, storms, plowing, and those are all things that I see. I think I would be a tremendous asset as your town manager, because I see things unlike most town administrators and town managers. I've been doing the construction, I've been doing the repairs and maintenance of towns for quite some time now, so it's almost second nature. One last point, too. When it comes to, you know, businesses and their operation in town, there has to be a balance in terms of what they receive for that tax dollars and what they provide the town in terms of employment and benefit and services. And that's a, that's a constant operation, as far as town manager and your involvement. And as Deborah asked a question, you know, that community outreach is key, because aside from hearing things at the select board level, you hear from the residents in the community. And as soon as you hear of those issues, you understand if there's an urgency behind it. So if you have a resident who's complaining about a street light or a street tree, probably going to hear it before you do, which is a good thing. So the goal would be to have your next town manager be able to kind of clean up some of the nonsense coming to the board, and I think I could do a good job of that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I'll go back to Charlie Matheson.
Okay.
He said, one of the things that you did was put together a traffic, not a traffic, a roadway improvement program, long-term.
Yes.
Well, we have, we have that same kind of report. Easton probably has the same kind of report also. Easton has done 13 miles of major work a year for 10 years. Stoughton has used about two years of Chapter 90 money, but has done three miles this year. And that's a good thing. But we have about the same number of miles of street as Easton does. Even though Easton is a bigger town, we've got more intense development. And we have very, very old subdivisions, and you've probably driven through a number of those, and you've seen some of the ones that are not in really great shape right now. And we have water reports that indicate that we need to spend about $6 million a year for the next five years to take care of old pipes, pressure in lines, and so on and so forth. We don't have a capital plan. We need a capital plan. As a matter of fact, it's in the town charter. I would expect that we would start to have a capital plan right away, even though we didn't have all the, where the money's coming from, we should at least get a good list of those things that need to be done, so we begin to have a conversation. Could you do that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll go into a little detail, because.
Thank you.
So I could absolutely help this town with those three issues.
Could you do it soon?
Pretty quickly.
Yes.
Pretty quickly. So paving, again, we have 400 miles of road, implement 90 miles of gravel road, which is unique. We have a very equal distribution of accepted and unaccepted, which makes it truly original. And it's the same representation at town meeting, which is why we maintain all the unaccepted roads. We implemented a paving management program in 2012, selectmen, you know, endorsed that. Plymouth gets about a million and a half in Chapter 90. Every other year, in working with the finance director, we create a program where town meeting appropriates $5 million to supplement Chapter 90.
Five million?
Five million. Because we, five million for road preservation, 70/30 split, accepted, unaccepted, and a million dollars for gravel road. And we've been doing a phenomenal job. And we use excess excise tax receipts to fund principal interest, principal and interest on the debt. So that's how we've kind of been offsetting the costs. And we, I want to say we paved 12 miles of road last year, easily. And we do more paving than most. Again, Plymouth is pretty much a city. Water main. One of my questions for later is the opera money in Norfolk County. As far as, I don't see Stoughton utilizing any of that. So I would like to see Stoughton use opera money for water and sewer projects, because that's the intention of it. The problem with water main work is it's taking you a year to get pipe, costs are through the roof, and I, I think you need to update your water master plan to kind of look, and I know Phil does a really good job of that, to see where those priority areas are. But then again, you have to match and line up and sequence your water main repairs, your water service replacements, and your paving. So that would be easy. That's definitely a forte of mine, and I would enjoy doing it. And I would be happy to teach any of the departments in town how that, a better way to do it. Capital plans, we just actually submitted a 10-year capital plan implement, because it's about affordability going forward, because it's tax dollars, how you control your budget. You guys have a healthy free cash, which I want to say is like 5.6 million, you have a nice stabilization fund. And looking forward, what are those big projects, water and sewer? The federal government has released a lot of money for those type of projects, and it's going through the SRF program, and 0% interest, a lot of loan forgiveness, but you have to get those projects in. The sooner the better. So getting those engineered and designed are important, because, you know, the federal, the SRF is a totally different type of procurement process, and I could help with that. The other thing I noticed last comment is, I think we could organize and clean up the capital submittal, so it's easier for town meeting reps to understand. When you go through the warrant, it looks like it's just pages and pages of capital. I think I could help clean that up, organize it with cover sheets by department, so people could really understand and see what it is these departments are requesting, why, the justification, through a very transparent process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carr. That's actually a good answer, without a question being asked, on how we buy the capital items, that we used to have them separated by department, so you could understand it, like you said.
Mm-hmm.
And then we throw it all in a big pile, and then everybody fights at town meeting to separate them. So why wouldn't we just do it properly, so you can see the way it is? I don't have a question, but that, I want to say that's a good statement, because I asked for it. I says, this year, they will be split. I am not going to allow or sign anything that is not going to be separated. I'm not going to have whining and crying over, there's three police cruisers here, and there's a fire truck here, and 10 items from Public Works, and why are we doing this? We spend almost a half an hour to 45 minutes on deciding why we did this. And we're the ones who can say, we're not going to do that.
Do you have any further questions?
Nope, that's it. I'm good.
I'm up next, and I have one very easy question, which is, in the letter that you have a chance to read, at the very end, it does mention that any members of the select board who have follow-up questions can reach out to the candidates, and I just wanted to confirm that you're comfortable with that.
Oh, absolutely.
Perfect.
Yeah, sure. Anytime.
Perfect. We have your phone number and emails on your application, on your resume, so we'll have access to that. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is that I'll be sending each one of the candidates an email with a case study, you know, set of problems. And what I'm looking for is really just for each of the candidates to sort of prioritize the problems and give an outline of how the, you know, the steps they would take to solve it, not necessarily an actual solution. But I do want to let you know, I've told everybody else exactly the same thing. So you'll probably receive that sometime tomorrow morning, and then, you know, there'll be a due date, which will be probably Monday night, mid-pastor night, or some good amount of time for you to complete this. There's not an expectation of a, you know, a thesis.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a huge document. I'm just trying to, and there's also, though I said this before, there are probably wrong answers. I think that most people who have made it this far would have judgment enough that it's really just a matter of style. I'm just kind of interested to see what your style of problem solving is. So I'll be sending that out tomorrow morning, as I mentioned.
Sure.
I didn't want to interrupt you. It looked like you might have been about to say something, but I kept it wrong.
No, call anytime.
Perfect.
Grab a cup of coffee, happy to do that, you know, whatever we need to do.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Peter.
You're welcome.
I'll pass this over to Deborah Roberts, Chair Roberts.
Mr. Peter, I have a question for you, but I'm going to delay asking that question, because I want to give you the benefit of the doubt. As I heard you express your background, you're an expert in DPW and Public Works and even being an engineer, but what I'm not hearing, I can tease it out of your resume, but you didn't talk a lot about how you collaborate with the legislative body.
Mm-hmm.
Or efficiencies, like website, communication, and communication with the, with the community, you know, something a little more public than, than what we currently have, because you know Stoughton. So that's the reason I wanted to give you the opportunity to talk more about it, because I think that's what we're missing, or what I was missing in as you were talking and answering questions.
Yeah, again, we have an hour, and we're only touching the surface of so many key important issues, and I'm happy to go into any of those details. So as far as being involved with the legislative body, I'm assuming you refer to town meeting?
Well, I was referring to our senators, Senator Walter Timothy.
Sure. Yeah, okay. So you're looking, like delegation, state reps, congressmen, like Keating. Yeah, sure, so.
Governor, you know, just.
Governor, yeah. Like me texting Karen Polito when we run out of salt, and she calls me back and helps us out, those type of things. Yeah, definitely.
So how do you negotiate with them, just more than just town? I just wanted to give you an opportunity to express that, because I didn't want you to miss the opportunity to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, no, that's so important, to have a town manager that is not only comfortable, but has an ability to interact with those individuals. So, you know, whether it be Congressman Keating's office or your state reps, depending on the projects and the profile or the situation at hand, you have to be able to reach out and get access and gain contact, and there has to be a trust-respect thing there, to know that, yes, okay, you know, the town manager in Stoughton has a solid understanding of the process and has an ability to work with everybody involved and can honor what you put forward in terms of a resolution, a dialogue, or a commitment on behalf of the town. the town. I have worked with a lot of legislators throughout the years in terms of developing projects. We rebuilt Water Street by Plymouth Rock, and we had to work with the state because that was all DCR property. I worked with the DCR Commissioner and our senator at the time was Terry Murray to make that happen, because it's important and it's very legal, if you would, in terms of how you require property, and that's a process. But some of the bigger things that may involve the state reps in terms of funding and projects, that'll happen all the time. I think, you know, I know the town manager has an open-door policy in terms of visiting hours and things like that. I would make it a point to reach out to them to see what the current events are, current issues are, and just to make sure that we follow through. But I do that now as DPW Director on some of our bigger issues. We are trying to re-permit our outfall to go to the sewer beds, and we are an environmental justice town. So I've been working with our state reps and DEP and the folks at MEPA to try to coordinate that because that's an important issue. So I think anything that rises above the typical level of town government locally, and you have to involve those individuals, of course, as board will be aware of it, but I think we work cooperatively on that. But I'm extremely comfortable doing it. I've been doing it for a while. One way, I think you asked a question of, I think it was outreach and getting information to the citizenry?
Yes.
Right? It's technology. Technology is key today. It's not just your social media, your Twitter accounts, but what is the town doing to interact with the residents? We're looking at a 3-1-1 system in Plymouth to kind of not only report but to update, because I know the city of Boston has it, and the city of Boston's 3-1-1 works unbelievable. So getting information out, whether it be press releases, whether it be reverse 911 calls, those are things that I'm very accustomed to. We do a lot of big projects in Plymouth. We're a tourist town, we have a lot of traffic, so every time JV puts a shovel in the road, people complain. And I've learned over the years how to really get ahead of that and address it through outreach, through press releases, through social media, getting that information online is critical. And it's really one of the focus points for me in terms of doing what we do today because it's not just a construction project. If there's an issue in fire, if there's an issue in PD, or, you know, if you're setting the tax rate, you know, next week at the Selectance Meeting, get the information out there. You know, if you're doing a immunisystem upgrade and you have limited access to Town Hall or Town Hall can't perform a function, whether it be a building permit or a tax bill, put it out there. That's what I like to do and I'm pretty good at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McCrisky.
I'm good.
Excellent. So as the memo mentioned, you have the last five minutes, closing statements, and if there's any questions you have for us, feel free to, this is your time.
Yeah, so again, thank you so much for the opportunity. It's, I'm glad I'm back again around 2:00, if you would, everybody. And like I said, call, any questions, I'm looking forward to the case study to provide that. But I have two questions. The first one is, what are the immediate goals for the next town manager? What does the board see as the most important goal for the next town manager?
So I'll take the first shot at this and say that my, as with all change, there's a lot of nervousness and instability that comes with change. And what I would like to, my first goal, if I'm being perfectly honest...
Yeah.
Is for, you know, the rockiness of that boat to settle, for people to feel comfortable, certainly town employees, to feel very comfortable with, that there's a strong leader, somebody who respects them, who, you know, they feel confident, is, they can work with, and also that the constituency of the town, that they feel comfortable that there's a leader in that top office who is ready to, you know, do the work of the town, and most importantly with that, that nobody feels like they're cut out from that access, either because of, you know, a manager who maybe isn't very good with communicating and just doesn't talk to people, or any sort of tribalism where if you're not, you know, part of my group, then you don't get access. And these are sentiments that I've shared with other candidates tonight, so this is not, I know that you live in town, so it might sound like this is more E to you, these are concerns I have regardless of who the town manager is. So it isn't, in this case, unique to you. So those are the kinds of things that stand out to me as critical for first couple of months.
Well, thank you. Just a quick response. I would look forward to that challenge, if it's a challenge. I like working with people. I like speaking impulsively. I think I have a pretty good personality, sometimes a little bit of dry sense of humor, but that's a good thing. But yeah, I mean, I think keeping that boat afloat and bringing people together is really a responsibility of a leader. And it's not only having or explaining the issues to people to make them comfortable and understand them, but it's bringing everybody to the table, like I said early on, to move people forward. I worked with Cynthia for a while back in the day, and I think she knows the ability, so that's a good thing, but...
I don't have a vote here.
No, 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 but my whole point is, there's a lot, there's a lot to a community. And I enjoy the Stoughton community, and it's not just the employees, but it's all the people involved, whether it be, you know, the Finance Committee or the new Diversity and Inclusion Group. It's like all of those groups, they need leadership, they need to understand, they need to hear it, they need to know people are working together cooperatively. I think that's so critical for a town, because when that doesn't happen, things implode very quickly. I've seen it, and it's not a good place to be. So I think I could help with that. So thank you. Another question is, what do you see as the most important quality in the next town manager?
I believe the quality that is so important in our next town manager is to be collaborative, build trust, be inspiring, have some tactical skills, like to be, have the experience of developing a three-to-five-year capital project plan, so you could hit the ground running. Work cross-functionally, building that team spirit, and encouraging communication. So...
Got it.
That's for my personal.
Integrity.
Integrity's a big one.
If you don't have that, then you don't have anything else. You only get that much in your life, and when you sell it, you don't have that.
I'll roll with the integrity one for a second. And again, you know, I started working in Stoughton in 97, and I've watched so much and I've learned so much. And, you know, going to Plymouth in 2011, so fortunate to have been able to be in that role and be successful. But without integrity, you're absolutely right. And I think the reason why I'm here again is because I have that integrity. You know, you can look online, you can call local reporters, you can sit down, have a cup of coffee with me and get into some really good details, but it's there, and I'm so proud of that. I am, I really am. And I do, I enjoy working with everybody. Okay. As far as closing, because I know it's late and I understand doing four-hour interviews is a lot on you guys, this is a stepping stone for me. This is, like I said, I want to go down a new path. It's about professional growth and development. It's about challenging myself to my fullest potential, which is why I left Stoughton in the first place. I never thought I would have the opportunity to be DPW Director in the largest town in the Commonwealth. Never thought that. And I never thought that I would accomplish as much as I did in Plymouth. It's just looking back, I mean, even looking forward, huge projects to do and there's great people there, so that's a good thing. But I will always do my best in this town. I mean, the people I work with, the people I live with, they're all my neighbors, and I would not want anybody to see me fail. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peter, thank you so much for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
And for considering Stoughton, that's a place you'd want to work, definitely very much appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good night.
Great evening.
Absolutely.
Be well.
Thank you very much. All right, everybody, have a great weekend.
Okay, send to you, bye.
So that wraps up our interviews. The one thing I'd like to say just before we close up, as Joe and I have worked with Community Paradigm to get to where we are, our goal was to bring candidates to you guys who we felt could absolutely do this job. And I feel confident, and I hope that you agree, that we do have four excellent candidates who are very capable and have had a string of successes that our town could leverage. From here, you know, I think there is a question of just finding the right fit for us on an individual level, and each of these candidates is, I think, so unique that it should offer a lot of variety. I find, I feel like it's going to be a challenge. I think that, you know, everybody was excellent tonight. So this will be on, a vote for this will be on the November 1st agenda, where we could talk more about it. But I just thank everybody for the work we've all done to make this this far. Community Paradigm has been amazing. Joe, I thank you so much for all the work you've done as well.
You did most of the heavy lifting, let's face it. You're very kind.
I think the both of you did a great job, so thank you. Very pleased with the candidates.
Excellent.
And motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night to everyone.
Thank you so much.